I want to talk to you. You know, is there much to say?
You see now, now he was out. And then the two pages.
Hey. That's what I wanted to do.
And it's not like I should have.
There you are. And then how about the second slide? I mean, do you have to keep that? Or are they going to contact you?
They contacted you. So I'll do it if your first can be signed.
Uh huh. Randy, do you know the, uh, the, uh, names of the people for the shots? Do you know?
We don't want to release that. We don't want to release, you know, we aren't going to release who's getting, who's not. The problem is just a choice. Now, if you want to tell somebody, I don't have an issue.
Yeah. And that's like, you know, I remember everybody would like try to look at what I'm doing tonight. And you're just like. It's very important to handle. Okay. Thank you.
It's seven o'clock. You guys ready? A call, January 12th, 2021, meaning of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. And as we always do, we will pause for a moment of reflection, followed by a pledge of allegiance. So if you'd like to have a moment to reflect on matters of life, or town, or nation, or whatever. Thank you. Thank you. Please rise and join me in pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America. And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, and in this world, with every being and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none. Uh, we will move on to public hearings, which we have no public hearing set for tonight. Our next item is consent agenda, which is the approval of amendments, December of the Act. Development bill list, contact approval for bulk storage for public works, for salt storage and material storage. Scheduled public hearing for February 23rd, resumed by Gay and Neil for approximately 1.38 acre property owned on Depot Street. Uh, by Depot Street Development, located at the intersection of Depot Street Northeast and Harlow Street, uh, Northeast. Tax map numbers 497A, 288, 497A dash 288A, 497A dash 288C, 497A dash 285, 48, 497A 286, and 497 dash 130 dash 3, and 497 dash 13 dash 1E. Request of other property from B3 General Business to R3 multifamily residential with properties. Property is designated as residential on future land use map, 2013 Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Scheduled public hearing for February 23rd for two conditional use requests by Ballzer and Associates on behalf of Shaw Development LLC, applicant dash owner, for a 3.2 acre parcel located at 1145 West Main Street. Tax map number 556A dash 39 in the B3 General Business District. Conditional use permit request for residential use as permitted in the R3 multifamily residential district. Uh, residential uses as permitted in B3 multifamily residential include single family dwellings, two family dwellings, townhouses, and multiple family dwellings at a density of development of up to 20 units per acre. A conditional use permit request for proposed planned housing development to consist of a single family, or single family, two family, and multifamily dwellings at the density not to exceed 7.8 or 7.8 units per acre. Property is partially designated as business commercial and partially designated as residential on the future land use map, 2013 Christopher Comprehensive Plan. So I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'd like to make one, uh, note for a revision to the minutes. It's, uh, section eight, item.
Okay.
Section eight, item H. The page is on under here.
This is on the December eighth meeting.
It's a small adjustment.
Okay.
On that, uh, it's section H. I'll let, let him on there. I mean, are you, or, I know you're there. Um, uh, on that, uh, there's a line that says this is related to a notice of violation. Uh, part owner of 103 College Street. Uh, Councilman Showalter noted that both complaints had been received by a third party, and it was typical for the town to follow for zoning violations, violate, or, uh, I'd like that to read that Councilman Showalter noted that both complaints had been received from a third party, and that it was typical for the town to follow up on zoning violation complaints.
Okay.
The wording there in the minutes was your order. Uh, it doesn't make sense, actually, to read.
Are you done, Mr. Shaw? Are you finished? I didn't want to talk.
I'm done. Yeah, I'm done.
Um, and Randy, I did have a, a question that I think Val was going to try to answer on the expenses. And that was under the special revenue fund that appeared we paid ourself. It said to Town of Christiansburg, review, I believe.
Special revenue funds would be things like certain grants. Uh, we may do reimbursement to ourselves, say, for town. Uh, I, to be honest, I probably need to talk to Val.
Okay.
She is going to be available later in the meeting. I can give her a call now if you'd like.
No, I can, I can wait. I mean, I'm sure Val has, um, something to back it up. I just, if she could share that afterwards, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
I still move to approve consent agenda A through E.
How much do I have second?
I have second.
How much on the second? Any further discussion? Adam Deputy Clark, for now, would you be a public council?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
Goodness, six oh, thank you. In our introductions and presentations, we have none. Our next portion is the citizens' comments section, or if you would like to address items within the, uh, go on within the town. I ask that you come to the podium, give your name and your address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Thank you, sir. Hello, um, councilman, councilwoman, Kim White, fifty little ways. Um, see Andrew, you have a picture? So today I'm going to show you a picture. Picture's worth a thousand words to say. So, uh, here you'll see, and I, and I'm here representing, you got a petition today about, I don't know, between sixteen, seventy names on it, a lot of comments on it. So, um, I'm here representing some of the neighbors. Some of them really didn't feel comfortable being here. They felt intimidated. There's been a lot of different tactics being used by those making a profit. But I'm here, and you'll see here that, um, this is what was referred to as the type of thing that we needed to look at to see what the patio homes were over on Vinnie. So this was referred to as, um, not a high density development, just a development that, um, you know, would give us a little bit of an idea of, um, of what it's, what it would be like over on Vinnie that was approved. And these are some single family houses in here and all. And then this is right next to us. And probably these people right here weren't too happy about that. And they might just call it high density. I don't know. I mean, it looks like it to me personally. Um, you go to the next one? So here is, um, our neighborhood then. And, okay. Um, so here's one away right here. There's a meadow, Vinnie's over here. And this is the proposed, uh, land to be rezoned that being voted on tonight. Um, this is going to be 14 different duplexes. These lands right here, uh, the mill lot size, I believe, is 150, um, uh, square feet, big setbacks. Um, but, I mean, you can just see it. Picture's worth a thousand words. You can see what this looks like and imagine 14 homes and duplexes in a cul-de-sac here. Um, there are some big problems we talked about before. One is that a fire truck can't get down in there. The cars have to be parked just right, get the fire truck in. Another is the school buses. And this is something I found in the, in the minutes. Didn't really think about before, but the kids all along here, there's a lot of kids in this neighborhood. As I've talked about, you know, there's concerns with the traffic and kids being injured. But those kids right now, if you'll go to the next one, um, it's kind of a better view.
Can you have thirty seconds?
They have to go out here to Stafford, between Stafford and O'Quinn. So it's very dangerous. The bus cannot even get in here. So they put the bus stop out here. So imagine 14 duplexes. They're less money than these other ones. There's going to be a lot of families, a lot of kids are all going to have to walk down to that dangerous bus stop. Be out there on Stafford Road. Um, so we don't want that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Greg Levin. I live at 1970 Palmer Street. Um, I have something to address to Ms. Hicks. First, I have a few questions for you. Do you know who I am?
Yes, sir. I do.
Well, that clears up some of your dishonesty from the last meeting from last month. I'm the previous resident of 103 College Street, uh, Harvard V. Um, this woman knows me well. She's been to my daughter's birthday party. Uh, I have, I don't have to go through everything in my notebook here, but got receipts. I've got signatures, I've got screenshots, text messages, paying you cash and rent. Um, I think the town really needs to understand, like especially the citizens of this town, the type of person you really are. Um, because this town deserves hardworking, honest, decent people. Your, uh, your words are full deceit, lies, and your image and your personality is fake. And you and your husband and James Jackson, the contractor you have working with you illegally, harassed me for, I don't know, half a year, the entire time I lived there. Um, you sabotaged my AC unit by pulling your fuse. You didn't do this, but your husband did. And I have proof of that as well. You guys threw my malloway to cover your tracks to prove I didn't live there. Pretty sure that's a federal offense, not, probably sure. Um, James Jackson, you know, he's a, he's almost, he's a forty something year old man. And he has a professional business at that exact building, 103 College Street, Jackson Enterprises. And he really, he posted this note on, um, his front door with my name on it, Levin, 103 B, B1. Tom, I was selling things on eBay, so I'll get a lot of packages in the mail. Back door, we do not accept mail or packages here for stupid. Drop at back door. He's referring to me as stupid. So, seeing the part for people to understand the type of people that she deals with, her and her husband and her shady real estate company. Um, it's not, it's not right. Um, I remember, you know, shortly after you and your husband evicted me, which your, your signature is also on the eviction of this. Um, you had a conversation with me on the phone, and it was one of multiple days where you just blew my phone up, just begging me to move. Because you had someone planning to move in on July 1st, which to this day, no one is, that, that building is still vacant, at least that section is. You told me that my, that me and my daughter, uh, we needed to find a place we called home. Well, that was our home until your husband, you and your husband kicked us out, basically onto the streets. Um, I hope you're comfortable where you're at, because it's not going to last long. For next election, I'm coming for your seat. And that's, that's all I have to say. People need to know the truth.
Now, can I, can I talk about this? Greg, you very well, and I'm glad that you're here. Because the reality is, you very well know I didn't sign that letter. As a matter of fact, I just found out about that letter this afternoon. That wasn't your daughter.
Is your.
And you very well know, very, that wasn't a signature. That was a name written down on a piece of document. Now, Greg.
Yes.
You very well know I had no clue or no dealings of you living in that place. I knew that you worked with JF for many years. I have known you personally for many years, and that is true. And this whole thing, it has gotten me blown out of proportion because you very well know that the lease that we had was with JF Jackson. Now, I have no business on dealings with the leasing or anything like that. I collect rent. And not until this summer, I collected a $200 payment, I think it was from you. But no other time I picked up any money from you, Greg. Everything I have got in for years has been from JF. I have no dealings with you.
I understand that, but my point is.
Personally, I did go to your daughter's birthday party one time, and that was it. But I had no clue of no dealings between you and Greg Levin. Do you understand this?
Your name.
I mean, uh, JF.
Okay.
So please don't make this, and don't, don't put and throw my name through the mud, because this is not fair.
The people have heard the truth, John.
And you're good.
That's what this is about.
No, but this is not the truth. You are lying. I did have no clue.
Thank you.
Can I respond to that with this piece of illegal?
You have one minute.
Okay. Why is your name and your husband's name on an illegal trespassing notice? If the police officer that served me this even told me it was illegal because I was living there? And not only that, Your Honor, I have a list of other properties that you own, that you and your husband both own. It's your signature, not your signature. Well, I'm not sure because your husband's handwriting is, I don't want to talk about my, you're welcome, I better. Anyway, your name and his name are both on this form. This was an illegal trespassing notice that was taped to my door. The police officer told me out of his own mouth that you legally couldn't serve this to me. He was just going to leave it there because he didn't feel comfortable because I was still living there at the time.
Greg, you very well know, though, whatever happened.
That's all I have.
Your employer, I have not been.
You're still asking for it.
That's where I have, Your Honor. Um, this isn't her house. You speak when it's your turn, and she doesn't really understand that. But that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
You may take the mayor's office if you'd like.
Thank you. I'm Donna Thornton Roberts, and I've been a business owner in Montgomery County in the town of Christiansburg for 44 years. And I wanted to take an opportunity to say thank you. Thank you for participating in the Cares Act that was designated for childcare centers. Forty-four years ago, I stood before this council. When we asked for a conditional use permit on Starlight Drive, childcare was so new that they put us on, you put us on the books as a nursing home for children. And 44 years later, I stand before you and say thank you for participating in this grant. The town manager and his assistant were extremely kind to us. And we're unusual. We're the largest childcare provider in the county. We have 11 locations, nine are in the county, and two are in Carroll County. And so for 44 years, I've had the privilege of being in business in this town. And we received our check, and I want to say thank you. It was supposed to stabilize and help us in the operations, and I can tell you that it has. Before COVID, we had 95 employees. Post-COVID, we have 67. So I am excited about us rebounding. I appreciate the funds, and I want you to know that they will stabilize our operations. But I couldn't, I could not not say thank you because it definitely made a difference. And it is an honor to be a business owner in this town. We're a third generation now, and I'm privileged to be in business. And I just wanted to thank you.
Mr. Thorpe, is it only your business again?
I own the adventure clubs and we own, and Grace the Child.
Thank you.
And so we're very thankful, and so.
We are grateful.
We are grateful, and I appreciate, uh, Mr. Wingfield, thank you for, uh, our, our, our business is kind of different. It's like Kroger. A lot of people use us, come in and come out. We served over 2,400 children last year. And so our license capacity is like 750. And when you, you put a particular date, we may have 300 or 350 within the, within the organization. But I can, I can just say thank you from a grateful heart.
Thank you for coming out for saying those nice words.
Just a minute.
I'm just going to read my statement. I'm Mary Ellen Campagna. Good evening to you. I live at 9 Overlook Drive in Christiansburg. This is Chris, this is Overlook Apartments. I'm a retired journalist and school teacher. My son and I have both lived in Christiansburg since 2018. My son Benjamin Campbell Moore lives at 595 Republic Road in Christiansburg, the Bluff Apartments. He has a learning disability and multiple sclerosis, so he can no longer drive. He lives on his monthly SSDI income since he's no longer able to work. We moved to Christiansburg because you have some of the best housing for the poor in the entire country. The Bluff is a government housing complex that's clean and well managed. Beautiful house, landscaping, trees all around, great maintenance. But according to, and you need to know that according to 2019 NRV Food Access Report, 35,000 people in the New River Valley live below the federal poverty line. Yet ironically, your transportation for disadvantaged people in this town is sadly lacking. In fact, it is totally insufficient to meet the needs of the more than 29,000 people who live in the 24073 zip code alone. Many of those people living below the poverty line are elderly and or disabled. We are speaking largely of taxpaying citizens who, when they moved to this area, assumed that affordable transportation would be provided because it's a right and a necessity, not a privilege or a luxury. Yet sometime last year, bus service from Blacksburg Transit was discontinued in the town of Christiansburg. This despite a brand new steel and glass covered bus enclosure that had just been built directly in front of Christiansburg Bluff Apartments. People were not properly notified of the lack of bus service, and as of the 5th of this month, there's still no sign there telling them that no bus is coming. I spoke to Kim Gray, spokeswoman for BT Blacksburg Transit on the, on the 5th of January, and asked her when the bus discontinued. When did the bus stop coming to Christiansburg? And she said it was on April 6th, but your town council, your town manager had a different date. Whatever, whenever the, the disruption in service was. My son no longer has transportation. I spoke to Vicki, uh, the manager, Ms. Vicki, the manager at Christiansburg Bluff on January 5th, and she said she's had to take her residents in her own car to the store because of lack of reliable and affordable transportation for them. She added that many of her residents, given the bus option, would take it. As it is, she's seen many residents attempting to get to their destinations, often just to buy food on foot. This is both dangerous and totally unfair. We are not sure where you're getting your facts when you report that only a few people rode the bus when COVID started. In summary, affordable and available transportation is a right of taxpaying citizens, not a luxury.
Thank you.
The citizens of Christiansburg deserve the same right that Radford and Blacksburg citizens have.
Thank you, ma'am. You extended over about fifteen more seconds, but thank you for coming.
Oh, I need to ask if there are any questions because I do have the right to ask you that. Are there any questions? Surely there are some.
Well, I know we have a Blacksburg Transit meeting in the next two weeks.
Well, are there any questions of me? Because I'm representing the people who live over in the Bluff and in other government subsidized apartments around here. Some of the best housing in the country, and yet no transportation for months and months and months, long before November.
I don't have a, um, I don't know if we keep for the New River Community Auctions. Do they have any contracts or anything with any transportation services in the town?
I wanted to tell you, uh, thank you for asking that. No, ma'am, not specifically for the people in my area, although they do have some programs. There is an access bus, a medical access bus. But you see again, it doesn't come to Christiansburg. That's a Blacksburg thing. Uh, the anytime bus, I, I was not able to say, but there's one person answering the phones down there. And so it's often extremely hard to get a hold of them. You have to tell them ahead of time where you're going to be exactly, when you're going to be picked up. And then you still have to figure out how you're getting out to the other end of Blacksburg for physical therapy or doctor's appointments. See, this is really ironic and nonsensical that you have this kind of wonderful housing for the poor and yet totally inadequate transportation.
May I make a comment for that? Okay, it's Ms. Campagna?
Yes, like Bazanya.
Okay, Ms. Campagna, thank you for coming. And, uh, I've been on the council long enough to say that this council has been very proactive in providing public transit. And just to let you know, and maybe everyone who's watching that may not know this, but, we currently put between $300,000 and $400,000 in that, into Blacksburg Transit per year. Just to let you know a little fact, $300,000 to $400,000 that the town funds to provide the service that we're providing. And we have to make decisions every year about that. But here's what you probably don't know. The town of Blacksburg, the transit system's great, and I'm all in, and I've been all in from the beginning. But a lot of people don't realize this. The town of Blacksburg does not fund Blacksburg Transit. Not, I, I think it's safe to say not even $1. It is funded by Virginia Tech students and state and federal grants to match that. So just to let you know that our town is actually putting, uh, money, uh, you know, taxpaying dollars on the line to provide this service because we don't have the luxury of having, you know.
Now, what, where is that money going?
I'm just, I'm just telling, you can take my facts, but I'm saying that our town has, is financially paying for that service that we do provide.
You mean the anytime bus? Or what are you talking about?
Yes, the bus service that, that we're providing in town is funded, well, it has some grants associated with it, but we're putting cold hard cash, taxpaying dollars into providing that public transit. Okay? The town of Blacksburg is great, but they actually, uh, they, the Blacksburg Transit is funded by, and Blacksburg is funded by Virginia Tech, and the fees, the student fees and so forth. And they take that, that math, or that money and leverage it with state and federal grants.
So are you saying that the anytime bus, which is a short little bus, you're certainly not able to socially distance with it? That that's sufficient for this entire area?
I did not say that, ma'am, and I understand.
Is that what you're supporting?
No, no. I just wanted to clarify that this town is committed to providing public transit for our citizens, and we're demonstrating that by paying for the service that we have. And those are tough decisions.
But there is no service. That's what I'm telling you.
Okay, I, I just wanted to get that out there, that this town is committed to providing public transportation, and.
Well, that's even more tragic since there is no.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Can I, can I make a comment?
Statement. If this lady has my address and email, if you'd like a copy of the longer statement.
But I do want to say. But I do want to say something. Randy, this year, isn't it correct? We got money back because Blacksburg Transit got grants and we were not using some of the services?
Blacksburg Transit did basically agree because of their COVID, basically shares of their COVID allocations, that they would fund the increase to the connector route service, basically fund the connector service. Although the decision was made with the Transit Working Group to cut that service because of low ridership. You know, I guess pre-COVID, I think they were averaging about six, six trips per day. That dropped down to one and a half trips per day after COVID. And the share, the cost of the ridership went from, I think around seventeen dollars. I actually have a slide for it if you want to bring it up. Went from around seventeen dollars to about eighty-eight dollars. I think Andrew's gonna bring that up for us.
May I say something to what you just said?
No ma'am.
I was quoted, three hundred dollars per day is what it costs to have, is that right?
That's the number I was kind of giving off the top of the head by, by the Transit Manager. He, I asked him to come up, come up with actual calculation per rider and that's what, that's what we're bringing up.
Uh, Ms. Vicki, who's head of the, the apartment manager for Christiansburg Bluff, said that what's happening now is with some restrictions easing, these people have no way to get to work. They don't even have a way to get to the grocery store. And a consistent, reliable, public transit way. The anytime bus has not been available. If, you couldn't even call but between nine and twelve. The, the phone never, nobody ever answered the phone. So this is not enough for this many people, thirty-five thousand people in this area. Come on, buss.
Before COVID, do you guys get the services or not?
We did have the services back before March of this year. BT is saying they cut off this area in April, about April sixth of this year. So it's been that many months that we've had many people, you know, people like my son, disabled people, elderly people, just poor people who can't afford a car. This is not fair. This is not fair. And if you are putting, and I do trust that you are putting that kind of money into something, then you need more to show for it, sir.
I understand. I thank you for coming. I just want to make that.
I do thank you so much for your time, all of you. Thank you.
Mr. Wingfield, were you able to talk to Mr. Tuck?
To who? Sorry, Mr. Fox?
Uh, Mr. Tuck over there at Blacksburg Transit about the go-anywhere bus, yeah.
It's Mr. Fox. I did and basically a slide I've got, kind of has some of their information that I've gotten from you, particularly the next slide. We spent annually approximately thirty-five thousand on the commuter route. We suspended service originally with, with basically the shutdown of Blacksburg Transit April third and restarted August twenty-fourth. We suspended the, the commuter route again with basically, and just the commuter route November twentieth. The Transit Working Group does have intentions to re-resit the potential of the commuter route when Virginia Tech returns to normal operations and we're investigating the possibility of extending go-anywhere service into Blacksburg for select trips. We have a meeting on January twenty-sixth and that'll be one of the topics, if you could maybe. Next slide, just to give you an idea of the number of riders and the cost per day. Basically revenue hours per day, two point five either way. Daily riders, it was eight point five pre-pandemic. After pandemic, it dropped to one point five. That's basically a difference, a difference in cost per rider of fifteen point nine pre-pandemic. After the pandemic, eighty-eight point two nine per rider. And I think just kind of the thought of the Transit Working Group is that's too high of a per- rider cost. We would rather take that thirty-five thousand, reallocate it to the go-anywhere service and try to expand that. I do understand that the, the call, that the phone number is, is an issue. Basically, I think the phone number is actually valid till seven PM, Monday through Friday. Although I know it being answered has done a little bit of an issue.
They don't answer?
Mr. Fox is investigating that and trying to address it.
So can you clarify, just to make sure, how much were we spending before this year annually on bus transportation in the town of Christiansburg? Was it three hundred thousand?
It, it's over three hundred thousand.
Okay.
You have some press counsel.
Thank you.
First off, I'd like to thank all of you for being here after you were elected. You're staying here diligently serving us during this pandemic and it's wonderful to see that. So I've spoken with most of you via email, phone. Oh, sorry. My name's Charles Robbins and I live at seventeen twenty Old Farm Village Road here in Christiansburg. I spoke with, of course, Mr. Wingfield over here and a couple others of you that I've had time to get with and try to deal with the mess that this lady over here was speaking about because it is a much-needed service here in Christiansburg. But the reasons I've been given have been all over the map as to why from everyone that's related to Blacksburg and Christiansburg, that's over the committee or any other authoritative body related to it. Been told it's a cleanliness issue because too many riders close together is an issue and it kind of is. But nowhere in this country has there been an outbreak from public transit anywhere. Literally, I've looked all over the internet and in libraries and I cannot find a single outbreak anywhere. Because of, you know, it's a good evidence to keep the social distancing, which is the go-anywhere, which is, which is okay at first. But then I got to thinking, there are other ways to fix that as well, to bring back the routes. There, there was an opportunity for a thirty-minute route for taking the go-anywhere money that you've put towards that to add more buses and just make it a thirty-minute route instead of the hour route for the blue and the gold routes. So now you've got four buses running at thirty minutes apart with the social distancing scene still taking place. And I thought that, that's probably the best thing to test because that's what residents want. They want more service. The bus that we currently had before the pandemic was full. It was always full. I ride it three, four times a day, most days, and I have for the last seven years since I moved here. And I love that it's being used because it's better on the towns for traffic. It's better on the environment for less people having cars on the road and just all kinds of benefits for having buses. The only issue I've ever had with the bus routes is the fact that you guys change it all the time and I don't know how you guys come up with these routes. But then, I mean, that can, that's a future issue that could be fixed after buses are restored. It would just simply be nice to see the routes you had in service, not necessarily the commuter route because the commuter route was, people stopped riding me because they saw the yellow signs everywhere that said the buses were stopped in Christiansburg indefinitely. And then when, I was literally the only commuter rider for three months, from August to November. And even the bus drivers, like I used to have a lady get on here, another person get on there and I was like, they just don't know the bus is back.
Yeah, about thirty seconds, Charles.
So in, in short, I just like, I didn't know this lady was coming. She is in no way related to what I was talking about. I've never met her, but you could see that even at the Bluffs, where I live over Linden Grove and Linden Green, there's so many people that want these buses back and not just low-income people either. There are people over at the, over by Food Lion off the, across from McDonald's and all the town homes over there. They all want these buses back, but they're all getting different answers when they ask about them. And it would be nice to have a straight, simple answer to, for you guys to get correct information because you've got a bus route out here that's too. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right. You didn't hear it. You didn't hear it.
Thank you.
You did, sir. You said the buses were full. Can you give me a number?
Uh, usually about ten at a time. Sometimes they would be completely full, like seat to seat and then kids on the laps, but that was a rare instance. It's normally averages about ten when I ride. And that's like when I get on. There's also, if I take, because I always take the full route. I get a, I get on at Linden Grove and almost always get off at the Mall of Walmart. And in that time, somewhere between five and ten more people get on and off. It is a full bus that just needs more people, or sorry, more buses to accommodate those that are coming because they are full. I mean, I think there's sixteen passenger buses to begin with. There's not a whole lot of room to work with. And we can't take the bigger buses that Blacksburg uses, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming up.
Yes ma'am.
Hi, my name is Rebecca. I reside at seven one one three Falling Branch Road in Fairlawn, Virginia.
Last name Rebecca?
Carr, C-A-R. I have a direct question for Mrs. Hicks to follow up on Gregory Revan's comment. My son was born on October eighteenth of two thousand nineteen. I rented from you for eight hundred a month. On October twenty-sixth, my, the day that my son came home from the hospital as a newborn, my heat went out and you made me wait three months with no heat. I had to pay out of pocket for a hotel and I just wanted to ask if this was regular treatment for your tenants? Because it seems that it is.
Rebecca, that is completely, if you wanted me to answer that question, you still have heating in the house. There were other heaters that work in the house.
You provided me a twelve by twelve.
I brought you down because that was one room that didn't have a heating.
It was four.
What?
It was four rooms without heat and we go to court.
I never saw that Rebecca.
We go to court.
When I went over there, there was one.
Okay, well, there was four and you knew that was four.
And you knew that was drunk and your boyfriend was drunk and if you wanted to do this, this already went to court.
I just wanted to ask if, I just wanted to expose that Ms. Hicks is not the town's.
No Rebecca, you didn't pay for months and this had nothing to do with me. This went to court and it was solving court.
Thank you. Thank you ma'am. Anyone else?
Hello, can you hear me okay with my mask on?
You can take it down.
You can take your mask down if you want.
Hello, my name is Virginia Pannebecker and I live in Blacksburg, Virginia at seven oh five South Main Street, zip code two four zero six zero. If you don't mind, I'll read the statement I have. It's, I also emailed it as well, so you have it for your records. Although I am not a resident of Christiansburg, I am attending today as a member of the New River Valley Community and as a member of Virginia Organizing, a local nonpartisan, nonprofit community organization to share comments on public transportation needs. Christiansburg, Blacksburg, Radford and nearby areas in the New River Valley may be separate localities and part of different government systems, but when it comes to jobs and local economies, we're all interdependent and interconnected. Many of my fellow community members, personal friends and work colleagues, live in Christiansburg. Recently, a colleague shared with me information about cuts to public transportation between Christiansburg and Blacksburg. Importantly, the park and ride lot near exit one eighteen off the four sixty, a critical transportation point, no longer has bus service as the gold and blue routes that service that side of Christiansburg have been cut. Public transportation is critical for residents to have reliable access to affordable transportation for jobs, shopping, healthcare, childcare and more, as we've heard from others already today. This is especially important for those without high enough wages or salary to afford a personal vehicle and still also be able to make rent, pay for food and other essentials, even more now when many people have lost hours or employment due to COVID-nineteen restrictions. While, while buses also must use social distancing precautions that result in lower numbers of riders and fees, regular routes serving multiple parts of our towns are a critical need in the central service. In addition, well-functioning, frequent, reliable public transportation with stops in different locations is an attractive draw for potential residents in our region and in Christiansburg itself. It's also something that employers and towns can highlight as part of recruiting new employees. They also help us all have options to reduce daily commutes that add fuel emissions and pollution to the air we breathe. As someone with asthma, that's also important to me and to others. I urge you to work with Christiansburg residents and Blacksburg Transit Systems and others to reinstate full services as soon as possible. I also plan to share these comments with Blacksburg Town Council and with Blacksburg Transit. And if you have others that you recommend I share them with, I'd be happy to do that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Hi, council members. So my name is Megan Shepherd and I live at two forty-five Gibson Drive in Christiansburg. I'm here as a member of Virginia Organizing, like Virginia that spoke before me, a community organization that uplifts directly affected voices to create change in Virginia and specifically we're within the New River Valley chapter of Virginia Organizing. I'm here in regards to public transit, specifically the cancellation of the gold and blue bus routes. I'm fortunate to have personal transportation and so it's pretty impossible for me to truly understand what it means to be impacted by canceled bus services. However, what I can do is trust people when they share their experiences about what the cancellations, how that impacts their lives. And we've heard from folks today just how much, I mean, it does impact their lives. For people who rely on public transit, canceled buses, bus routes reduce access to jobs, medical appointments, social services and essentials. Limited bus, limited public transport not only impacts individual members of our community directly, but it has a snowball effect on our community more broadly, as Virginia stated earlier. Fortunately, there have not, as, as Charles said earlier, there's been no COVID cases that have been associated with public transit. And so canceled bus routes must be reinstated following COVID protocols. Based on earlier conversations, we clearly need a better system to reinstate these bus routes. And so my question is, what is it gonna take to reinstate these bus routes?
I think we're gonna need a really good conversation and involve those people, possibly with the Health Department, to make sure, you know, when bus service does come back, we can make sure we're all as safe as possible. I know that was a concern of low ridership. So I think you're, personally, I feel your concerns are very valid and I, I speak for myself, but I want to make sure bus service comes back and it's healthy for everyone. So that would be on my radar, something to watch out for and talk about and bring it back.
Yeah, and, and again, going back to the prior conversations, you know, there clearly has been, like I think we have a major issue with like the current funding situation. Like y'all were talking about earlier, where the current funding comes in, there seems to be limitations there. Since there haven't been outbreaks in public transit, I think it can be done safely. It sounds like the major issue is getting the bus routes going again. And so, you know, my question is still, like, what is it gonna take to get those bus routes reinstated?
I think we've got a lot of good things coming out of this recently. I mean, we got the vaccine that's being rolled out for a lot of people in the town. Maybe that would be something that we can consider and maybe Randy can talk to the Health Department and see if there is a way to get the Transportation Department, the people that drive the buses, to be vaccinated or, you know, do different things that can help as far as maybe more glass or plastic protection from rider to rider. I don't know what I saw this, but I did see like some more of a plastic cubicles that you could use in buses. So maybe that's something that in the next meeting, the mayor that you go to, maybe that would be something that can be talked to because it's obviously a necessity in our town and I do appreciate you for coming on and speaking about this.
I would imagine we'll be having a conversation with Blacksburg Transit prior to that meeting on the twenty-sixth.
That would be great.
The information that's been generated here tonight.
It would be great for you to update us about what goes on in the meeting.
When, when is that next meeting?
Twenty, uh, sixth.
Twenty-sixth at one thirty.
Is that a public meeting?
Uh, we don't really advertise at the public meeting, but we don't really have an issue of people who want to attend. I have had people reach out to me about attendance. If somebody wants to attend, we can either have them come here in person or we can send them a Zoom link. So if anybody is interested, just contact me.
I didn't know that I had ever seen.
Randy is, um.
One thirty on the twenty-sixth.
Those drivers are you, are they in the priority one A or one B, correct?
I would think that they would be priority one D under the covers, correct?
And Ms. Shepherd, is there any way you can provide at least that, that they can take to this meeting? The number of people and per complex or units that are looking? And is there any way, did you, have you done any type of survey on how many people want the service? When they want the service? Has the apartment managers or lot managers got a list?
All you need to do is reach out to community members. I mean, you just had like two voices here today that, that can tell you more. I mean, you just had, like, two voices here today that can tell you more. Because as I, as I said, I'm here as someone who trusts when someone says they are struggling without having public transit. I'm fortunate, I don't, like, my, my life is not impacted by those canceled bus routes, but it still affects community members. And so I encourage you to empower those who are currently impacted because they are the source of the solution. Those that are impacted are going to be the greatest source of solution for this problem.
I did think the...
Blacksburg Transit Group and their marketing people wanted to contact you to set up a meeting with the residents? Can you do that for us?
Yeah.
Do you have a meeting room or enough COVID space or if they will give you data to hand out, will you see that it's handed out and brought back by the other?
I mean, I'm definitely happy to coordinate that, such a meeting.
COVID's kind of scary right now, but I mean, if there's some way we can communicate through verbally or by phone?
Yeah, what's the best way to, like, who's the best contact person to facilitate such a meeting?
I'd say myself or Andrew or Tom Fox from Blacksburg Transit, any of the three. I do have your email from earlier and I've already forwarded it to Mr. Fox, Blacksburg Transit Director.
Because I haven't submitted my statements, so I'm not, if you have my email, that's great, I just don't know how you would have it. But Charles' email, I mean, that is definitely someone that you want to be engaged with. The person who spoke earlier before Charles, definitely someone that you should, you know, have involved in these meetings because they are directly impacted. And again, they are, they're the answer to the solution because they know exactly what it's likely to be impacted by these canceled bus services.
We are sending a Zoom link to Mr. Robbins. He's asked to attend.
I would really, really like to see and consider maybe when you go, when you guys go to this meeting, that maybe there is some way, shape or form that we can take, take track and keep track of the riders. And in case somebody was sick, was there an able, an ability for us to contact them? I mean, that wouldn't probably be our job, but I will definitely want to have some kind of, you know, like, a list information, a phone number that the people can be reached on in case there was a case of coronavirus in the bus, that they can be contacted and say, hey, you were exposed most likely today or yesterday or whatever that is. And, and I also would like you to see if there is any data as far as when the buses, I'm more than sure they have it, but when the buses used to drive by block apartments to see how many riders were able to use those services in the past and see if maybe that can be made a priority. Some of those places where there is the most riders. Is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I know that Blacksburg Transit keeps a daily, monthly, year-to-date ridership which is going on. So, yeah, I mean, those figures are out there, but you know, my one understanding is they have a problem right now with drivers. That they're short-handed, a lot of the drivers are retirees and they have chosen not to drive any longer because of COVID. So I'm not sure what the full staffing issue is, but I do know one time that they were down and short in advertising for drivers. Now, if it's gotten any better or not, I don't know, but I know that was an issue back in the early stages of COVID.
I told my boss for Virginia Tech, made up for Blacksburg Transit years and years ago. But I think one of my biggest complaints was that the roads, you couldn't really access the roads, they were so hard to turn around. I guess one of the comments that we can make in the town of Christiansburg is...
Would you go ahead and down in the hall, please?
One of the great things that we have in the town of Christiansburg that when you are able to use those smaller buses, maybe we can be able to find better, you know, drivers just because, you know, you're not using this long, long bus, but a smaller bus. So just a comment of that.
Ms. Shepherd, I think, I think what you're hearing is the town is for bus service and, you know, every year we have to make decisions on how best to do it. But I think any information you can provide us to help make those decisions as effective as possible, we're open for. I think that's what you're hearing here, the common denominator is, we're not against it, we're committed to the bus service, we just have to figure out how best to meet those needs. And you saw some of the numbers, it's just, the more information, it's information-driven too, for the most part. We try things, but, yeah, I, I would, speaking for myself, I would like to see as much bus service as possible, but again, we're spending taxpayer dollars and we have to make that, the decisions, you know, those decisions be as effective as possible. Anyway, I just want to emphasize, I think what you're hearing is, we're committed to bus service and we're, we're not against it and we're not purposely cutting it back because we're against it. Anyway.
You know, ridership, if you can help us on that, ridership, you know? Mr. Wingfield put that up a few minutes ago about the numbers, or lack of numbers. And you can see, we've always talked about, the town is already putting out a great deal of money and if we're putting the money out and we have no ridership, do you follow me? Is that, is that fair for the rest of people?
Well, I just, while numbers, you know, are something that you can't ignore, that's for sure, you have heard from people who are directly impacted and the need is there. So I just encourage you to continue to listen to people, their personal stories, because people are impacted. And like I said, someone like me who has personal transportation, I could never understand what it really means to truly rely on that public transport, but I can trust people when they tell me that there is, there is a problem and there is a great need, in particularly with the cancellation of the routes, like the gold and blue routes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Since the public comments, Matt Hicks, 607 and a half, South Franklin, Christiansburg, my lovely wife Johanna Hicks there. I just want to ask the question, how much taxpayer dollars has been wasted over the harassment on 103 College Street? I'm just curious, how much are we going to waste? We're talking about public transfer here and why is this a tax dollars? Well, this is something that should be public knowledge, how much money we're going to waste to the taxpayers' dollars? I feel I got to come here because you guys aren't going to listen, anything, Reed, Randy, Andrew, all of them have many, many multiple documentation regarding 103 College Street. Rebecca Carr, who was just here, she has a $4,000 judgment in the court system, which Dan Hamrick offered her a settlement on. So if you guys want to discuss Summit Rich Realty, come on to me, the courts are open. Mr. Reed there says he's tired of dealing with this stuff, just as much as I am. So I understand that Johanna was elected by the people by a landslide vote. There's no comments or saying that's public smear or whatever. The bottom line is, I own Summit Rich Realty and I run it, and yes, she does the books, she keeps up with stuff, because over the past 15 years, it's been impossible for me to do. So, the matter of 103 College Street, again, there's multiple, multiple, multiple documentations on it. It started as a civil matter, which Mr. Jackson asked me to get involved, then a gun was pulled and it became a criminal matter. That's when the timeline got extended. So if anybody has a question, period, about it, it's to me. All the documentation, all the paperwork you got, everybody has it, everybody has it already. So, I understand it's going to come up again tonight that you want to smear my wife and shame on all of you guys for doing that politically, because we've seen what's happened in, in our culture and our state and everything, for nobody working together, everybody just wants to fight against it. I'm excluding that half of the side over there, because I don't believe that any of you guys are actually doing that. It's just sad to see the state that Christiansburg has gotten into over these many, many, many years. So again, Johanna Hicks had nothing to do with College Street. You want to blame anybody, fuss anybody, me, call me the jerk, whatever, obviously there's plenty of people around that'll say that, but the eviction process is always nasty, yucky, et cetera. I believe it's been thoroughly discussed and beaten like a dead horse at this point. And Reed had one of his representatives meet Mr. Jackson in person. And Mr. Jackson was getting quite frustrated with the fact, why does this keep going on and on and on? So, can anybody answer that question for me? Why does it keep going on and how much taxpayer dollars are we actually wasting? Anybody? No comment? Yeah, that's what I thought. Freaking wonderful. It's a shame that I moved to this town 20 years ago and started a business because of the way that you treat small businesses and what I see happening, the general public is seeing it as well. Okay, so they're very astute to what's going on. That's why she was, that's why she was elected by landslide. I'm going to give you that.
I don't think 300 votes is a landslide, but anyway, let's go with that.
How many total were there, 3,000?
Over 3,000.
Over 3,000, I believe, total, right?
Shawalter had over 3,000 votes, Mr. Bishop had over 2,800 votes.
But the point, the point being...
Well, that's just one question.
Yeah, the point being, the people want something different, they want the truth. They want to know where their tax dollars are spent and is not being squandered. They don't need to waste their time on this piddly little stuff.
Mr. Hicks, can you ask a question? I mean, answer one, please, then?
Sure.
From the beginning, I believe there was concern about 103B College Street and it was denied that that was a residence.
Well, they denied that it was a residence. It was denied access for anybody to go see it. There's no, there's no other, ever said it wasn't.
But that's the concern that's before council here that...
No. Ask Mr. Andrew Warren, he's the zoning guy. The business owner is allowed to rent to an employee, which proof was given to him, period. The eviction process took from March until, who knows, July because of COVID and the fact that Mr. Revan was fired and then also the fact that the police came and there was a gun pulled. That's why it took forever and that's why I told, I told Jerry Henley and Randy, more than happy to show it to you once this guy is gone and there's no criminal nonsense going on, because I'm not putting myself at risk, period. There's no denial of was he living there? Yes, he was. He was an employee of Jackson Airways, which is allowed for zoning. I don't know why, like I said, why this keeps coming up when there's a letter right here dated September 15th that the zoning thing is done. I'm not denying he lived there, he was an employee of Jackson Airways. A copy of his paycheck was given to Andrew and Randy.
Matthew, can you testify and say over here that I deny and collect the rent for this year's Trump, Greg Revan? You very well known, I had nothing to do with this.
Yeah.
I always collect the rent from JF Jackson and that was it.
Yeah, JF Jackson brought the rent in person, most all the time cash or different things like that for, for a long, 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 long time. And then when JF Jackson could not get rid of a disgruntled employee, that's when he asked me to come in. Again, all this is in multiple forms, which I don't know why Andrew and Randy and you guys haven't passed it along everywhere. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Well, I want to make sure we're done, because I'm tired of this coming up. I, I've met with multiple lawyers six months ago trying to put this matter to rest and get rid of the, the eviction process.
Have your attorney been in contact with our attorney?
I spoke to Mr. Reed this morning and asked him, do I need to have them contact him? Because if it's a criminal civil matter, this is not a court. This is not a court, is it? If it is, then I'm going to go ahead and move out of the country. So Reed, would you please let me know if I need to get my lawyers to reach out to you?
As I said this morning, if your lawyer wants to talk to me, I'm happy to talk to him.
Talk about what, though? That's what the point, where are we going with this? What is the point to driving in the ground? Do you want me to close up shop and leave town? Is that what it is? That's what I feel as a business owner, as a citizen. That's what I feel. Can anybody answer that? Is there any other questions that you need on the matter? This isn't the only chance I get to speak, three minutes, and then you guys are going to do your thing and do whatever you want to do.
Thank you. Anyone else to address council? If you know one, we will close our question here, our citizens' comments. We'll move on with the committee reports. Mr. Thompson, Mr. Bishop from the street committee.
Two short issues, Mayor and Council. The first one is on Rennam Street. It's just past Sackel Barrel on the right next to, is it Good Shepherd Baptist? Or is it, what's the name of the church?
Yes, Christian for Baptist Church.
What is it?
Christian for Baptist?
Christiansburg Baptist, yes. So, you can see from the sketch where the hatched area is, you can sort of see what interchange is, but it's right next to the church and it's agriculture, it's a, Andrew, can you go over and show the zoning line right there? There's three parcels there today. And there, the zoning line that you see there is business, it's a strip zone, it's business from there to the, where Andrew's cursor is to the road, or to Rennam Street. And then from Andrew's cursor to the bottom of the sheet is agricultural. There's a grandfathered use for manufactured housing that you can see in the middle, sort of in the heart of the property right there. And that, that, that use is grandfathered and there's no plans to increase that, nor I do, I do not believe they can increase that without going through a process. Is that correct, Andrew?
Yes.
Okay. So what the owner of the property is doing is re-dividing the property, the same, for the same three parcels, reconfiguring them to create a business parcel in front, which is property zone for business, and then a panhandle property that provides access to the, to the manufactured homes that are there now, that you see Andrew in the outline, and then a rear parcel to the bottom of the sheet, which is presumably for his, his or her home in the back. So it's just going to be one lot in the back that's agricultural zone. So it's just reconfiguring, there's three parcels there today and the rezoning, or not the rezoning, the, the re-subdivision of this that is shown on the plaque is basically reconfiguring those lot lines to, for those purposes, to create a business lot in the front and maintain the mobile home, manufactured home development in the middle and then a rear parcel in the rear. So, Andrew, the staff gave a good presentation on this and the street committee reviewed it and recommends approval of the plaque as presented, and that is also a motion.
I have a second motion.
A motion in a second.
Can I please see a satellite view of this location? I couldn't really see it on the other meeting, it was very hard to see. I know there was discussion about the trailers and stuff, so there is no changes to the trailers, is that correct?
That's correct. And they, and they can't increase the number of manufactured homes on the property without a process. Yeah, Christiansburg Baptist.
Those are small boxes, not still the trailers, are they sheds or what are they supposed to be, just out of curiosity? Oh, okay, there's a view. And where is Rennam Street, is it on the other side? Do you happen to know what kind of business there are going to be put in?
It doesn't, it doesn't matter. No, I don't know and it doesn't matter for the, for the subdivision part.
I just wanted to find out.
No, I don't, I don't believe we know and we didn't discuss it, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all my questions, thank you.
Okay. So I have a motion in a second, is there any other discussion? On the court?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stike?
Aye.
Okay, council, the second one is revisited, it's marketplace revisited in, everyone's familiar with what marketplace is. What you're seeing there, the total gray area is marketplace and the little parcel that you see there that's dark, Andrew, you're doing a great job following, you're reading my mind. So the little parcel there, we'll go to the next sheet. And this may look familiar, council, well, I don't know, can you go to the one we approved in August or not? If you can, well, it's just to bring council up to date. In August of this year, we approved a subdivision of this marketplace to create five out parcels, just to, just to refresh your memory here, so you can follow along. If you remember seeing this plaque, the developer had presented, wanted to carve out five out parcels there. The council did approve this. There was never, the developer, the developer never recorded the deed, or I guess never recorded the deed and after 60 days that expires and he cannot, the developer can't do it, does not record within 60 days of town council action. And it wasn't that he forgot to or whatnot, they changed their plan and so that's what we approved in August and that's no longer floating around out there because it sort of died, let's put it that way, it died. So the parcel, or the request before us now is to carve out just partial H. It's the very same partial H that we approved before and it probably has everything to do with, you know... before, and it probably has everything to do with, you know, attracting tenants. But that's what the subdivision plat is now, is just, just that one single parcel H that was part of what we approved back in August, but it's no longer the other four. So the rest of the parcels is just, you know, open, and we'll probably, I, I bet we'll see another one, and that's, you know, as, as it continues to develop. So this subdivision plat was reviewed by street committee, and that, the recommendation to council is to approve the plat, and that's also a motion.
I'll second that.
A motion in a second, discussion?
But the, the owner is, is happy with everything that's going on in the marketplace, and we're going over in the, in the right direction, and this is not a step back, this is just a...
Discussion on the motion to approve that?
We didn't discuss the developer's happiness, but...
I, I do have some concerns, and I guess my biggest concern is, I have been by this location many, many times, because Chippewa was there, and my kids like it. So I'm happy that this, all this development is happening on this side of town, and on this location especially. But one of the concerns that I have, and I, believe me, I know that it's still under construction, but the streets, how, are you, are you going to be able to have a road right on the left side? Is that something that's been talked a lot about already? Or are there going to be just parking lots all around these locations and these businesses? I just want to make sure we don't, we don't get into another thing like trying to get into Chicken today. You know what I mean? That we, I want to make sure that people can, are able to go in into these businesses and go out in a safety manner. And that's my only concern, as far as when we're making sure that we're looking at cutting down all these lots. Because right now, as I see them out, you know, when you first go in, when I'm looking at what I'm looking right now, the road is not going straight. You got a, now you've got a box that you're taking out for business, which is great, but it's not a straight. So I just want that to be addressed as well. Going ins and outs and how are they planning to be, make sure that there is not going to be accidents and people are going to be confused. Because this is not a normal street. That right there, up there, the Market, Market Street, the other side of the, if anybody understands what I'm trying to say, I just want to make sure that everybody's safe to going in and out of these businesses. Because it seems like there is a lot of pieces that we're cutting out, out of this location.
Well, our subdivision, our development ordinance is very tight, and what I would say, just from watching this development unfold, is that the ingress and egress to this entire property is remarkably improved. And I think once it's, as it's built out, the internal flow will be right along with that. It has a lot more accommodation, not just for vehicles, but for pedestrians as well. So I would just, to that, I would say that our development ordinance is tight, and it's been reviewed by, the development plan's been reviewed by staff, and so not only vehicular ingress and egress, but internal movement and pedestrian access has been greatly enhanced, including crossing over to, crossing over to the newer valley, or the uptown Christiansburg now.
I'm not worried of any malls and areas around that don't have a significant roadway around the perimeter of the parking lots, and even in the parking lots, anywhere you go. So I, I can't imagine we would not have the same thing there. I mean, there'll be, there'll be drive lanes in front of all the stores, and lanes into the parking lots. So it seems to me that it's as good as, as we would expect it to be under our guidelines.
I guess when I'm seeing it from, from this side of the aisle, the stuff doesn't look straight to me. You know what I mean? Like, if I'm looking at the...
It's not finished product here.
Well, that's a naked drawing, all the showing that's...
I, I understand, I know, but there is not another street that I can see as far as, you know, going. I know that there is the Market Street. It's actually very, very bit, very good developed now. I have been through that, and I think it's great. But as far as the older, trying to get to the older entrances for the older businesses, all I just want to make sure is that we watch for what's coming, and just make sure that we work with them, to make sure that there is a safety way for people to go in and out of those locations. That's all.
Okay. Just to let you know, Market Street is going to stay, is a private street right now in that section through the marketplace. It's going to stay in place where it is. They actually have a, I guess, a fairly major connector coming off of the, the quote-unquote new entrance at the back. It's not really a new entrance, but they're kind of, have opened that up with the demolition of the building back there. They plan to connect that through to Market Street. And so you should have a, basically standard driving hall for that connection. Anybody's welcome to come in and take a look at the site plan, too. I think it shows that there's, there's good connectivity and good, good all, all width on the, on the development, so.
Mr. Simmons, you got anything to say about that?
No, sir, just, you know, the developer, Marketplace is, is excited, they're continuing to get, you know, interest on different tenants. As Mr. Stipe said, you know, as, as COVID has changed, some of the things, the tenants have changed, we're working really hard to be sure that when we put this in, you know, it's fit, and the puzzle pieces are fit for the overall development that we have proposed to council a year and a half, two years ago, whatever it is now. So we're excited to move through with this.
And there will be ample, ample ways to get around it.
Access to, yeah, throughout the, the development, ample parking and, and...
Like I said to you, right now, I do know that it's under construction, a lot of the roads and stuff, but I know...
And I think you'll start to see some more of this, the little box, the little white box just on the left of that little stump road that's coming in to the darker box. Best Skyline National Bank, they're getting ready to start construction on that here in the next couple of weeks, hopefully. So you'll start to see how the road infrastructure around that perimeter starts to...
It will start looking more like...
So, yeah, you'll start seeing more over the next six to eight months.
All right. Thank you so much.
Okay, any other questions?
But they're hoping to have this finished by the end of the year.
Any other, any...
They would love to, Mr. Hubbard, I mean, they're, they're working as fast as they can. A lot of what you're saying here are different pieces as far as tenants coming in and different finance impact.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Stipe. Madam Court?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Shaw Wilder?
Aye.
Councilman Stipe?
Aye.
That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Six other, thank you very much. Under discussion on action by mayor and council, we have a rezoning request by Ballzo Associates on behalf of RWW 36 for property 4.3 acre property owned by Mary Maxi Jewel Trust, Mary Stewart, Canada Emply, Bill Jewel Trusties, located west of, west of, well, away. Would like to change it from R1 Agricultural Rural Residential to R2, two-family residential with proffers, in order to create seven two-family dwelling lots for a total of 14 units, as well as a lot designed, designated for stormwater management. Property is designated as residential in the future land use left, 2013 Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Do we have a proffer that has been presented on this property?
We do have a revised proffer. We had a proffer previous to the property, and Mr. Woody Revasta Proffer, basically to include a, these single-family only that's developed.
Single-family, one-story?
Correct. Says the, the new proffer that's before you this evening, which, council has a copy of it in front of them, would be discussed. The applicant shall only construct one-story homes either on slab or over a basement on the property. No two-story homes shall be permitted.
And it's seven, there's 14 single-family units, not seven duplexes or whatever?
It's seven duplexes, yeah.
Seven duplexes, so it would be, like, so the others, the other proffer that has stayed the same, that the R2 zoning shall only be utilized for two-family residential use.
One thing I will point out, though, the proffer that was received today was after the public hearing.
So to be sure, there is, there will be 14 single-family units. There's no apartments, no townhouses, no condos, nothing else going in there?
So there would be 14 units in total. They would be in duplex, you know, so there would be seven of the duplex, the units, 18 units in each duplex. So it'd be a total of 14, and that would be the use. Sorry if that was...
Slate, Slate Creek right next to it. Slate Creek Commons is the same concept.
Okay. Thank you.
I want to make my comment real quick. Mr. White, I'm really appreciative for you coming out here tonight. I really think that you, you have done your work. I think you and your wife have done an amazing job in showing the community what it takes to make sure that your voice is heard. As you can see, your voice has been heard. Not to the extent that you probably wanted to, but obviously some things have been changed during the course of us taking action to this tonight. And I hope that you understand that we try to kind of meet in the middle sometimes, and I think this was a great representation of how you as a community, and representing a whole bunch of neighbors, coming out to speak, can make a difference. And I do appreciate you for coming out tonight and every night, that we have planning commission meetings and all kinds of meetings, because I know that takes time out of your family and out of everything else that's going on, and for you to be a voice for the community, and I appreciate you doing that.
Do we have a motion to approve this rezoning?
I'll make a motion to, or to adopt the planning commission's recommendation to approve. I have reservations about this redevelopment, as, as we do on all these that are, especially when you have three sides of the development on a, on a property. I think the developer's done their homework. My primary, my, my biggest reservation was to make, to fit in with the homes around it, with the single-story homes, because on all three sides of the property are single, or story homes. And that was clarified and actually presented, presented by the, it was, it was offered by the developer. So with all the potential developments on the property, I, I think it's an appropriate redevelopment. It's not perfect, and I understand the concerns. I read all 61 comments, all 61, and I did notice that, or a macro observation on it was the reservation about development itself, and all the, the bad forensic come along with the development, which is traffic and, and things that we all know about. I did not read any comments about the single-story homes. That was, that's just my personal observation from going around on all three sides of the property and looking at it. So enough said, I understand. And Mr. White, what I'll tell you is, these decisions, at the end of them, we have to press a red button or a green button, and we have to think about the community as a whole. And it's, it's difficult, but I think, I think, I think the developer's going to do a nice project there. I think it's going to fit in, I think it's going to fit in once it settles in, and be better than some other potential development that could come in there. And Mr. Simmons is here. I have one question for you. I didn't revisit my notes this evening on the density, but the density is 3.7. What's the density on... And while he's looking at that, I personally contacted the developer about some of my concerns. One of them, Mr. White, since you're here, was why did he select duplexes versus single-family detached, similar to the adjacent development that we have approved along the Vinnie Drive extension? And the developer told me that he could go either way with it, but he thought that the duplexes provided more of a green appearance, like Slate Creek next to it, because there's more distance between the units. Oh, 3.25, and that is significantly less than the one we just approved. I think the other was 3.74 or something like that. So this is less density, and I'm not making an argument for, I'm just telling you what my mindset was going through there. I didn't prepare any notes, but I understand the reservations. And I've actually spoke to this council before I came on it with the same reservations on adjacent development at Windmill Hills. So your, your comments are not falling out of your ears, but I am going to, I do think this is, I think it's an appropriate use of the property. And again, we had to press a red button and a green button. I want to press a green button tonight.
Motion, do you have a second?
That's a motion.
I'll second that motion, so we can open up discussion.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
You know, I was concerned, and Mr. Simmons...
Do you want the microphone to put there?
I was concerned about the getting in and out of the development. And I believe that I heard that there are two ways to get in and out. Can you, can you elaborate on that?
Yes, sir. There are two ways in and out. The first one's come down, if you're going north on Stafford Drive, off of Pepper Sperry, you can take a left on Vinnie, take a right on Waddle, and then a left into the development. You could also go on up Stafford a little bit and hit Almetto, which is up at the top of your screen there. Take a left on Almetto, a left on Waddle, and then a right into the property. So that's, that's the, those are the two ways to get to the property itself. There, there's not two ways out of this development, but there are two ways to get to the property from Stafford. So that is a landlocked parcel. Based on the way the development around it has occurred, there's only one way in and out of that, of this 4.0. Is that okay?
And, and the residents, can you tell me what type of people you think are probably going to move in there, their range of income?
Range of income? No, sir, I can't, I can't guess the range of income, because it's all about the buying power of that, of that particular, that particular home matter. I think, Mr. Wilson, sir, we say low threes, mid threes, 300, you know, lower to mid $300,000 homes.
I had shared a message with council that I had some reservation...
Move it closer. Move it later, yeah.
That I had some reservation with all of the 60-some comments that we had received, that there is a last-minute proffer. And I'd, I'd like to ask council if you mind delaying the vote until next meeting, so those people have a time to re-address that proffer and possibly update their opinion on that. Because that, that was definitely appreciated when you come together like that. It's very powerful. And I appreciate those concerns. I do understand them.
And just to comment on that, what Mrs. Sachs just said, that is correct. This just happened, and it actually took place today, January the 12th, where there was a proffer change of no two-story homes shall be permitted. And I hope you understand, do you hear that, Mr. White? So I know that that was a big, big concern for a lot of the residents around this area. And I am really grateful that the developers were able to come up with a solution and try to come up together and make sure that not more than two stories were going to be built in that location, just to make sure that this went through. So I know that sometimes those decisions are hard to make, mostly when, as you go up, you can build a larger home. So I know that, that also messes up with your pocketbook. So I am grateful that you were able to change that, even though it was our kind of last-minute thing, but...
Well, and, and again, just for council, you know, I emailed everybody this morning just to clarify, just a miscommunication between myself and my, my client at the public hearing that Councilman Stipe's brought up. I just wanted to get it out there this morning, and when, when the discussion was, you know, is that in a form of a proffer, realizing we had gone after the public hearing, we didn't, that, that's a commitment by Mr. Woody to do so, which is why we, we amended the proffer statement. You know, if, if council is, is comfortable, I'm not, actually, I shouldn't say that. I'm not sure what legally from a, from a zoning standpoint, we could do. If we can, we could pull and go back to the proffer I had earlier this morning. But again, it was there as a commitment based on what Mr. Woody had already explained and, and committed within himself and with his company to...
committed within himself and with his company to do. So we certainly didn't do that to do anything other than clarify some of the conversations that were had previously. So it was more of a cleanup item than anything else and to ensure council that that was the commitment of the developer.
I do think from my perspective, it was the last council meeting, we came together even with the last planning commission meetings, it was a very difficult decision to make. And it was very difficult because, you know, you do see, like the one guy made a comment, we're gonna have over 400 units being built just within a four-blocks ratio. And I think that's just difficult to comprehend mostly when you live close by. But with that said, I know that now having more than two stories, the residents should be happy about this because I do see in some other places like the new developments that are about to take place very soon, that that's not the case. That's not the case. That was, you know, now you're gonna have buildings that are so large, and that's gonna really mess up your view for other homes. So this to me was a great decision from you guys' part, and it was great that the residents were able to come together and come out forward to meetings and everything else and make sure that that did not take place. So, thank you.
You have comments?
Go back to the traffic flow. And you are gonna put in the roadway into the development, right?
Yes, sir.
Can you go over there a little bit more?
Yes, sir. The developer will pay for the infrastructure required for the new road to come off of this fifty-foot section right here. This will be a full town, fifty-foot right-of-way town street, all built to town standards, curb and gutter, sidewalk, the whole thing. And that will be on, that will be the responsibility of the developer at the time of the site plan.
You know, I kind of wish, since you were the developer, that you're gonna be the engineer for both plans, for right-of-way and the other one, for that road to come out like in a big circle, you know, what I'm just saying.
It's, you've got a pretty big drainage swell that runs between the two properties. It would've been hard to meet town standards to get that road to drop down that quick and come back up without some, without some serious earthwork between those two.
And you upstairs, there's no on-street parking?
I don't, I don't believe that was, I know that was discussed at planning commission, I believe, but I don't think, we have not proposed to limit on-street parking.
So this road going in is a four-fifty, fifty-foot road?
Fifty-foot right-of-way, thirty-foot, yep, thirty-foot street. Yes, sir, Mayor, based on, based on town standards.
I think the one reason why we stayed away from the parking, no parking zone, I mean, not putting any restrictions on this, on the main road, it was because the subdivision is gonna have four, four places to park a car, isn't it true? I mean, the driveway, you can fit four cars plus, can you actually fit two cars inside the, are they gonna have garages, right? Is there gonna be a one- or two-car garage?
Two-car garages, yes, sir.
So two-car garages, and then does that mean you got two parked inside the car garage? And can you actually have four? Is that, are you counting those? Okay, so it would be six spaces?
Right, and you could see the six based on this, based on this drawing. This isn't the final engineered plan, obviously, but we have thirty feet, we have a thirty-foot building setback, so we can't build any closer than thirty feet to the street. A lot of times in the rezonings, we'll propose less setbacks, so it pushes your house closer to the road to present different to the street, but that gives you a shorter driveway. So that's where you see more of the on-street parking. But here in this case, we're gonna have a, you know, the minimum, you know, depth of the driveway is gonna be that thirty feet. So we've got, you know, a standard parking space is about eighteen feet. So we'll certainly get two cars in there, and they'll be able to get more based on where the final location of the house sits.
Thank you.
One more thing. Are you planning on building them all at the same time? Or are you gonna build one when it sells, then another? Or do you have a plan?
It's all gonna be constructed, the infrastructure itself, Mr. Hubbard, will have to go in all at once. The buildings themselves, I'm assuming Mr. Woody will build them as, you know, as he goes. He'll pick a side and work his way around the development.
All right. So it's gonna be a couple at a time, probably?
Likely, yes, sir.
Okay. We do have comments?
I'll make one more comment to Ms. Sax's point. I try to be respectful of other requests. If it's council's pledge or to delay a vote for two weeks to see what comments we get, I will support that and withdraw my motion. I would say to that, though, in reading the sixty-one comments, it was sixty-one, sure. In reading the sixty-one comments, none of those related to the height of the building. There may have been some discussion in planning commission, I won't speak to that. But of the sixty-one comments that were there, none of those related to, they were against the developer.
Overdevelopment.
Yeah, not to take anything away from them, but none of them directly related to the one concern about the single-story homes. So, but I will respect, I will respect your desire to postpone the vote if you still, if you feel strongly about that, if you wanna wait two weeks. I'd just say in those sixty-one comments weren't related to the height of the building is just the development itself.
Right.
Of what you've heard tonight, did that help? Or what you still like to add?
If you just move it away, I will support that.
I think the right thing to do is to let those sixty-one people who commented share any updates and give them the proper time. I don't think two weeks will...
Then I'll support that. It was a late, it was a late proffer.
Should we go to...
I'm gonna withdraw my motion to take action, or to take action this evening.
Ms. Sax, do you withdraw your second?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a new motion?
The new motion would be to wait two weeks for this new information to be presented to the public and get responses back before a vote is taken.
And I will second your motion.
Thank you.
I would like to have, to see if there was a...
Any discussion?
I'm sorry. If there was a way to provide some of the, maybe a letter that we can provide to those people that commented, or maybe I can just, can I, can I share, can I share this copy with Mr. White tonight, and then he can probably give a copy to his neighbors?
I'm not sure what it is, the proffer?
This was, yeah, this was the proffer statement with the changes.
I assume there's no objection to that?
You know, we could ask him to do any updates on the petition, and that way you see it. Y'all got a lot of length of that, so you can see what happens.
Right, right, which is wonderful. I really appreciate that.
So can I share this copy with him so he can share?
Yes.
Okay. So we have, too far, Joe, I'm getting ready to vote. Passing, right. Bucket brigade, okay. So we are, we have a motion and a second to delay for two weeks in order to update the information for Mr. White, to update the information to his constituents.
I think that's, that's the right thing to do.
Okay. Any other comments? I'll make one comment, and I think that, Ken, I appreciate you coming and representing all sixty voices. We didn't realize we were gonna have to draw on transportation, so we could still be here in the morning with coffee spoons. But I do think, and I like the way you presented your petition online, but I do not feel that I think we need to get into any more public comments about this thing when we go down the road to vote. We've had two planning commission meetings, we've had the discussions tonight, we've had petitions tonight. So, and again, I'm not gonna prevent anybody that wants to come for citizens' comments, but I will be very adamant with three minutes, and I would prefer one speaker out of that group. So that's my preference, and we'll cross that bridge when we get there, I guess.
Yes, sir, and I think the petition being live will help a lot because you'll see exactly what the public's saying about it.
Well, I think, I'm like a breadwinner, and I, I don't think, honestly, I don't think we're ever gonna put a great big basketball court, the whole size of that parcel that most of the people would be happy. They wanna leave it a natural farm lane. That's my estimation of it, and of course...
Or like the picture I showed, just similar to what we have now, top farm lane.
Okay. All right. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stites?
Aye.
Number six, oh, thank you. Orders to amend Chapter forty-two zoning of the Town of Christiansburg Code for the purpose of clarifying the allowance of structural projects such as omeens, canopies, roofies, gutters, architectural features, porches, and decks into minimum required yards. I believe we had this public hearing on the end. I don't think there were any comments.
And he passed in full support from the planning commission. It was, we had a lot of conversations about this, and I think we had, I think just clarifying what our town codes are is just great, so.
Very good. So we have a motion?
I would make a motion to approve this ordinance to amend the...
To Chapter forty-two?
The chapter forty-two.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Mr. Hubbard? Any other comments, questions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stites?
Aye.
Number six, oh, thank you. Approved budget amendment number two. Budget amendment two, resolution to accept state funding for the utility debt relief up to $69,900 for water and sewer charges and provide up to $9,000 in general fund monies to provide relief from stormwater, water solid waste, and miscellaneous charges. You got that all?
I so move to approve budget amendment number two.
I should have been, Val, Val, Val.
Hi, Val, I'm not sure why you called me anyway.
Hi, Valerie.
Can you hear us?
I can, much better now, thank you.
Thank you. So if we're gonna talk, Val, get up in the mic.
Do you want me to redo my motion?
Yeah.
I so move to approve a special injunction by Mayor, letter C, budget amendment number two, as stated.
Second. Good motion. Got a second. Can you hear the comments?
This is awesome. Valerie, we're waiting for you.
No, no. One second, I guess.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't exactly hear the question.
No question.
Do you have any comments towards, it's on the, it's on the table right now for approval. Do you have any additional comments?
On the budget amendment two?
Yeah.
No, other than an update, we did receive word today that the period of time will be expanded based on the expansion and the new date of the CARES Act. So remaining funds will again have to be re-divided with Blacksburg, and we'll have to figure that out. So a second round may be different than what we're initially expecting at this point because Blacksburg will probably have more to add. We were allocated the seventy-some thousand based on the Town of Blacksburg and the Town of Christiansburg. Town of Blacksburg, their initial certifications received very few as compared to what we received, and so we looked at potentially a second round. But we got word this morning that the date for those will be extended through December 31st of 2021. So we will be working with Blacksburg to figure that out. There was in my cover letter on the motion, a discussion about if you wanted to extend it beyond, and I guess at this point, because of the extension, I would suggest we just go with what we have currently for certifications, and we'll look at it again when we talk with Blacksburg and figure out what the allocation of any remaining funds are.
Valerie, how many applications did we get into Town of Christiansburg?
Off the top of my head, and I was unfortunately unable to pull up the information because the wifi here in this campsite is deplorable. I believe it's like 120.
156.
About almost 600 that we sent out.
We sent eighteen, and we received 156.
Thank you, Randy.
And how many of those applications were not eligible?
Fifty-two were not eligible. So we have a motion and a second. We know that this initial amount of 69,9 plus nine is going to be expanded now to help with the utility bills, water bills, and then there may be a second round. Is that a good understanding?
Yes, it's a maximum receipt of the 69,9. Currently with the certifications we have, it's around 20, it's on that memo, you're stretching my memory here. Randy, can you look at it? What was the total federal cares and the total town contribution?
The cares, the cares would be 25,770, and the town contribution would be 8,778.
Okay, so that is what the current resolution states, and that would be my recommendation for now. And if there is additional funds that are needed or desired, we would come back to council with that.
Hey, Valerie, is this 69,9, was that just for Christiansburg? Or is this 69,9 divided by Blacksburg and Christiansburg?
The total was a little over seventy-some thousand with the initial, right, for both towns. And Blacksburg was only able to receive certifications of about $6,600, which left the remaining balance for Christiansburg to use in this first round, which is why the resolution was written that way. But this morning, we got word that they're extending that deadline. So the allocation of the roughly forty-some thousand that will remain, we'll have to get with Blacksburg and reach an agreement on how we're gonna divide that remaining amount that may extend into December of next year, oh, this year, sorry.
Valerie, was the, was the day line before December the first, right? Is that correct?
The bill had to be due by December the first to qualify, and we had a number of applicants that applied for January one, but they had no, or bills that were due January one. But that was not within the period at that point in time. So what we have at this point in time is what's in that resolution. So then moving forward, we'll have to look at how we allocate the remaining amount of funds in that division with Blacksburg and how many they may have that are eligible because it was one allotment of money for both towns.
So the day line of December one was extended to December 31st, and then also the day line to apply for this, was it extended as well, I imagine?
No. Well, it is in the CARES Act, yes, but for this round of certifications we have, the deadline was not extended. We have been continuing to accept applications because we don't know what second round is gonna potentially look like. But this resolution would cover the federal CARES Act funds and the town support for those bills that go through December the first, but would not include any amount for general fund support for anything after December one. We would have to bring that back to depending on how we real, reallocate the remaining funds.
Thank you, Valerie.
Any other comments? Any other comments or questions? Can you hear Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax?
May, I have a question. We kinda jumped a little too quickly. May I say that now?
We're in the middle of the vote, so you can abstain or you can vote yea or nay or indifferent.
Well, Val requested us.
If you can't hear, you gotta get up to the mic, funds here.
As Val was talking, she requested that we modify what we're presenting today, and I don't think that was discussed.
I think we're not available presenting today.
We, we may be bringing something back to you in the mic. I think, I think that's basically what she's talking, talking about.
Is it gonna be less than what we're trying to do now, or is it gonna be more?
It, it may be additional funding with the extension of the program.
Okay.
But then that will come back to town council?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So I understand that. Thank you. Um, yea, yea.
Yes. The funds are, right? Very good. Thank you.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Sykes?
Aye.
Number six oh. Approved budget appropriation number two resolution?
I so move to approve the budget appropriation number two resolution.
Okay.
My second up.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
It's great. Thank you to CARES Act money for that. That, that was well received and very well needed in the communities.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sykes?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Sykes?
Aye.
Number six oh, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the Discussion of Code of Ethics Revised Report from Town Attorney. Rob?
We just had a, a quick update. Um, we reported at the last meeting on the, uh, one oh-three B College Street zoning issue, and after that report, I guess we got some attention from the public, and a result of that was an additional document that we didn't have before, and so I've circulated that to council. Um, I understand, I know the copy's not very good, but that's, that's the version in which I received it. Um, and it appears to be a termination letter addressed to Mr. Revan with regard to one oh-three College Street, Unit Eight.
Thank you.
Is it a termination? We're allowed to discuss that now, 'cause it was provided, we're allowed to discuss that, or not?
Yeah, I, I think you're allowed to discuss the document, sir.
And now you, you better listen to me for a second. Failure of due process, and I hope you understand this, because I, we just received that this afternoon.
Is that a, is that a termination of a rental agreement? Is that what that is?
I know nothing other than what's on the face of it. But that, that's what it seems to, important to be, but I, that's all I, I mean, I, it's not easy to read.
I will give Matthew Hicks the time to speak.
Uh, determine if he speaks and who doesn't.
Okay, will you please give him a chance?
Let him view, you could copy that letter, and you could speak. This is discussion by Mayor and council.
This is?
We've got a lot of, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so, this is just another thing to drag me into the mess. That was a private matter. It had nothing to do with me. This was between, you know, that letter, which I just saw today, by the way, my, um, it was a way for my husband that runs Summit Rich Realty. I do the accounting. I had no knowledge, like Greg Revan came over here and said. I knew the guy because he worked for J.F. Jackson in the past. Now, I do know that J.F. Jackson terminated the guy. I do not, and I did not receive no payments from him for the last years from Greg Revan. I received payments from J.F. Jackson. Now, that paper the man had to give out or put in the door for Greg Revan was a way, a legal way, the process asked, or the lawyer had somehow mentioned to us, or, well, not to me, to my husband, that he had to do that to be able to evict him and take him to court, even though he was not supposed to be there. And the reason why my husband got involved in this was because J.F. Jackson asked him to get involved. Now, I have no dealings with Greg Revan. I went to a birthday for his daughter years ago when he wasn't, you know, what I believe, you know, we, you know, he was a normal, you know, just nothing into it or whatever. I got the invitation or whatever, I went over there. I think his daughter is an absolutely beautiful girl, but that's it. I don't have no dealings with the man, and I hope this is done and rested with, because I'm tired of seeing this. And this really touched a very, very emotional part of me because that building was owned by a person that I was great in this community, Dr. Myers. And Dr. Myers was like a father to me. He passed away six years ago, unfortunately, from a plane crash, and this man had given every minute of his time to be able to help the community. When my son was in the hospital, he was the only person that would drive back and forth to Ronoc and UVA to pray for my son. So we ended up taking this building. My husband has been running it. I collect the rent. They put it in the box or whatever, they send it in or whatever. I have no dealings with Greg Revan.
Thank you.
He never worked for me. I don't have no dealings, and I am down with this matter.
Okay, thank you. We have, we have options. I mean, we can say it's done, it's over. We can, uh, we can determine if malfeasance or misfeasance, not only for this matter, but in, in performance at all and, and other issues has been committed, and we can, we can, uh, we can fine a member, we can sanction a member, or we can, with a five oh vote, we can vote a member off of council. So I, I think that, uh, I'm going to ask council the next, the last meeting of February. This will go back on the agenda, and we will either terminate it or take whatever action the council wants to take. Is that a group of council? Or do you wanna drop it now?
You know, I don't say too much, but I'm, and I'm not taking anyone's side. I'm trying to stay as neutral as possible. Previously, we've received letters that everything's been taken care of on College Street, correct? And it's my understanding once again that the tenant was renting from his boss.
Exactly.
You know, at that time. I am ready to drop this. I mean, I'm not taking anyone's side, but putting my other hand on, I think it's enough's enough.
Okay. So you wanna drop the issue about one oh-three college?
Yes, I do.
Anybody else?
I do have a concern. Is that previously, let me rephrase this. If Mr. Revan was renting from J.R., whatever, his enterprises as a employee taking care of the place, would he not pay his rent to Jackson?
I don't know what happened between two, the two of them, but I do know this, Marisa. Every month I got payments from Greg, uh, from J.F. Jackson, and that is it. I never received those payments from Greg Revan. Now, Greg Revan, this summer, decided to say whatever, that he was, you know, I had no clue of what these dealings were going on. I had no clue that a gun was pulled on until that came out of the year. My husband, we have a lot of properties that we manage, and if I was to tell my husband everything that's going on with council, he doesn't wanna hear it. My husband doesn't tell me about what's going on with his private matters as far as leasing or contracts or whatever. He is, he's, he's a broker, he's a Realtor, he has his own handlings with real estate, rental management. I have my own handles with real estate and rental management. I don't go up to him and tell him everything that I'm doing, and therefore I have no clue of what this, what's going on. Do you understand? Today, that letter, he, he just told me today. He doesn't wanna talk about it. He's done. He's like, this is done and over with.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I'm, to tell it through this feels like harassment. It definitely feels like harassment. All you guys keep doing is, in my opinion, push me out of the door. And listen to this. I am not moving. I am not going out. I got over three thousand votes, and if you think that you're gonna kick me out for something that I haven't done, good luck to you, okay? But I, I was elected by the people, just like you always. And I believe I deserve respect, because I have not been feeling very respected in here. I am the first Hispanic ever elected in this town, and all I am being pushed around with is a whole bunch of people that, here in council, besides with the exception of Mr. Bishop, you guys have not welcomed me. You treat me like I'm your enemy. I'm not your enemy. I came over here to work.
I'd like to get back to the question.
I'm not finished, Mrs. Sykes.
Yes, you are.
I came over here to work for the people and not to work to attack me.
I have a question. You actually said there in public comment to Mr. Revan that you did accept cash from him.
He brought a payment in June or something.
Right, but a few months ago, you said you've never received any payments.
But the years before this, before this. Do you understand? This went into a legal matter this summer.
Right, but, but you did accept payment from him.
It was one payment that showed up, a name, and it was cash, and that was it. Now, do I have a clue what was going on? No, I had no clue. J.F. Jackson said that's from Greg Revan or whatever, or, I had no clue about this. Now, you guys keep ta- attacking me for my business. I, this is not my business. This is my husband's business, which you have nothing to do with that, and you shouldn't be getting involved, even this lady Rebecca. Everything she was saying, the guys went over there to fix her electricity stuff or whatever, and her boyfriend was robbing my studio the time. He refused to allow our people to go there.
I do not think that's appropriate to discuss in opal council, what somebody has done with their credit.
Well, then, well, this is definitely attacking my family.
My question is, Mr. Revan said he paid you in cash, and you said you didn't know what it's for. Is it, is it typical people coming to the door that you don't know that you take cash from and don't question that?
You know what, Mrs. Shawalter?
That, that's a question.
You will be, you will be amazed to know the amount of people that come to my office to bring payments, including college students, and they don't even sign the money grams or the money orders.
You have no idea who they are. You just accept the cash, correct?
If you're doing, you're telling it.
You know what? I, I will get a, I will get a, a text message. I will have to contact everybody. I do a lot of checking, and my husband knows about this, because I'm like, do you know from, who this is from? I, I have no clue a lot of the times, and I do think, you know what, since you do work for Virginia Tech, a lot of the students are from Rutherford, but that's another matter. They don't even know how to write the checks.
I don't understand how that, how that's to do with the question.
I'm just saying that. Just because I received a payment in June or something like that, in cash from somebody, but that guy Greg Revan, that doesn't mean I was renting to him, because I was not.
But, Mrs. Hicks, the document that was shared through Mr. Broton has your signature on it stating?
It has not a signature. That's my name, and my husband wrote in there as a way to, you know, he was doing that. I didn't write that, and that is not a legal action you can take against that.
Why, why would your name be added if it wasn't needed?
I'm like, can you take a, a stand on this, please?
I'm asking you, Joanne.
You know what? Because he runs Summit Rich Realty, and?
Because you own it with him.
I don't own Summit Rich Realty. He does.
It's LLC in my name. This is a material notice. It's not a legal document. We should know that. My gosh. How many of these have I stumbled upon? So, Joanne, that is not your signature? Your husband signed your signature?
It's not. That is not even a signature. He doesn't even say on the paper it's a signature. Does he say it's a signature in there? There is no, he doesn't say under there, this is a signature.
So it isn't your signature?
It's not a my signature.
It's a printed name.
It's a printed name. It's not my signature. I didn't sign it. My husband didn't need to sign it, and he did not sign it. He wrote my name on it.
Chair, get your question answered.
No, why did he, he didn't think about it. He was trying to get rid of the guy.
Thank you. Mrs. Sykes, chair, get your question answered.
I don't believe so.
If you're willing, go pursue it, or let it ride. I, I, you know, I'm about as tired of this as everybody else is, to be quite honest with you. Uh, so.
Let's move on.
We go on, agenda, on February the twenty, the last meeting of February, will be on the agenda one more time for the final discussion, final.
I thought we are done with this tonight. Do I, do you really have to continue to drag this on forever? I mean, it's been on for eight months, I think.
Are there any issues that we have with you with the plans that could affect your turn, your, your part?
No, all you have been trying to do is trying to get rid of me. All you have tried to do is get rid of me. That's harassment right there.
All right, thank you.
Do you wanna go back to the comment you made several years ago about me and the minorities? How we don't, we don't do nothing wrong here?
Uh, you know, I never said that.
Yeah, you did. Yeah, you did. You told me that, and you told me that.
The minority already, and his parents don't have to say. Stop it! This is ridiculous. It's getting out of hand, and it's a damn embarrassment to council.
And it came up because of College Street. So, Rick, I'll be in touch with my lawyer tomorrow. I guess we gotta go another month. Hi, Mr. Seaton.
This gets so out of hand where we cannot ask each other a question and get a simple answer, and I'm frustrated.
You know, and it's, it's, it's true. That is true. Uh, there are a lot of statements that go around.
I would like to have.
A lot of statements that go around.
I would like to have drawn up street property back in here again as well with mine, because if mine is. How is it clear? The guy said he sleeps there, and she rented to the other guy, and she took another guy to court, which, he actually lived up there. It's an apartment. It is an apartment. There is the court case.
We're in both.
We are opening back up here.
We're done, we're done on this thing. Uh, you know, there's obviously a lack of code of ethics throughout, and we need to pay more attention to this, or we just need to get rid of the code of ethics and all of us be deemed as immigrants.
This court of ethics is, it should not be a thing to try to, you know, smear somebody else's reputation when I have nothing to do with this. Now, we can continue.
We're gonna move on.
Yes.
We need to move on. Okay.
So what was the move on? We're done with this, right?
We're going.
And then Christiansburg, okay.
We're done going on on that one. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, duh, 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 duh. Staff reports.
All right. Mentioned in our, uh, managers.
Get that, get that man a stall, son.
I mentioned in the weekly update that we were looking at the connector route, and we mentioned the possibility of a naming contest for the connector route. Uh, the connector route I'm talking about is the North Franklin Street, Pepper's Ferry Road connector route, uh, that would connect basically beside the Food Line Plaza on North Franklin Street at the new signal. It would go basically at, across the intersection of Cambry and Providence Boulevard where there'd be a roundabout, and then continue on to north, uh, to Pepper's Ferry Road at the si- the new signal at Clint Stewart Boulevard. Uh, we are, of course, looking at developing the connector route through the park, or at least to the access to the park, and we're looking at potential names for that. Uh, I know council's mentioned the possibility of having a name, naming contest for that. I'll just open up to council what your desire is for that.
So we're, we're Patrick's Way is, is the original name?
Well, I, I don't think we necessarily want Patrick's Way for the name of it, which is the name of the street that is basically been realigned there at the Food Line Plaza between North Frank, between North Franklin Street and Oak Tree Boulevard.
You don't think about this a little bit?
Whatever council's desire is, if you'd like to have a naming contest, if you'd like to come up with.
Well, I went to the sponsorship.
We're still gonna work on those.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, if, if council wants to have a naming contest, if you wanna come up with names amongst yourselves for discussion, if you wanna take it to Parks and Rec Commission or Street Committee, that, that's fine too. Just, we'll just maybe direction.
I think it's a good idea to, to let the town, uh, the citizens of the town get involved.
I'll, I'll speak to that. Uh, I thought it was gonna be on the agenda this evening. I was gonna bring it up during council reports, but I, I'm gonna go ahead and throw something out there, uh, as a, as a proposal, actually. Uh, there's a lot of history on the property that this road goes across. Uh, many folks don't know, but Christiansburg Institute used to be a hundred and eighty-four acres, uh, and most of this road is on former CI property, and I would like to recommend that we name the road the Booker T. Washington Parkway. Uh, I'm gonna read a little excerpt that I brought this evening, uh, about Booker T. Washington, a fascinating, uh, personality, um, that was advisor for the, for the school. He's a local, he's a regional child, too. He's from Franklin. He's from Franklin County, Hales Ford in Franklin County. A new era for the Christiansburg Institute began in 1896 when Booker T. Washington, founder of Tuskegee Institute, became advisor to Christiansburg Institute. In 1909, Washington addressed almost 5,000 Christiansburg residents, both white and black. The Christiansburg Institute implemented a curriculum similar to those at Tuskegee and Hampton Institutes, continuing to grow throughout the early 20th century. The institute expanded to property at 140 Scattergood Drive, where the 1927 Edgar E. Long Building is today, named for the principal of the institute from 1906 to 1924, which still stands. In 1947, the Friends, Freedmen's Associations needed the institute to Montgomery County, Radford, and Pulaski County school systems. During the years of segregation in Southwest Virginia, Christiansburg Institute served the educational needs of African-American students from up to 15 counties at a time. Of course, Christiansburg Institute closed in 1966 when local public schools integrated. And this is not my idea, but I feel passionate about it. Having been here this long, I give full credit to Melissa Dennett. And we can go through a naming contest, but I did not know Christiansburg Institute existed. I grew up in Blacksburg, okay? I didn't know until 24 years ago about this when I moved here and learned about it. But this road is primarily on Christiansburg Institute property. I think it would be an outstanding tribute to Christiansburg Institute and to a lot of things. And I'll go a step further. And this is, well, I'm gonna bring it during council report. I won't say peak during council report. But I think we ought to go to the next step and name the Christiansburg Park our new park. We've talked about it, but I think we should name it Heroes Park. Heroes is a catchy name, and it's something that the town, future town councils can decide who our heroes are. They could span the gamut of our sports figures, our military service people, civil rights leaders. It's unlimited. Withers Park in Withfield. My lovely wife took some pictures, actually, Saturday, not knowing this was gonna talk about this tonight. She took some pictures in Withers Park, and they have different types of things. But Heroes Park, I'm gonna go and throw that out there. I'm not, just for y'all to think about. But I think it goes along with this Booker T. Washington idea. And it leads to Heroes Park. And Heroes Park, our new park could be named that. And it could be something that our future councils can decide who our heroes are and can memorialize them throughout the park in all kinds of creative ways. So, there you go. I'm done. I'm sorry to take up time, but I was gonna bring up that during council reports.
You know, I think that comment about Booker T. Washington, if it was, they had a huge article in the Ronald Times yesterday, I'm not sure if you saw that, about him, and saying the exact same things you did there. And I think, I could support that. Now, about the Heroes Park, I think that's a good idea too. But I think in the back of everybody's mind is that we're hoping that we can get a company to name that after, the Carillion Park or whatever, and get some money out of it.
We can talk about it. It's pretty...
I'd like to move on with Booker T. Washington Boulevard, but I'd like to table any thoughts of Heroes Park at this point in time. I just, it just doesn't ring good to me. Let's just move on.
I do, if we were to vote on this, I would second the Booker T. Washington because I do think, as well, I was thinking about Christiansburg Institute the other day and how wonderful it would be to have, you know, a person from our community recognized.
So, it's a form of second. Is it difficult in form of a motion?
Well, I will, yeah. I'll retract and say I propose that we name the connector road the Booker T. Washington Parkway or whatever road you want to call it. Parkway is a first, it's a nice friendly name. And it's a wide, a wide away is 110, 100-foot a wide away out there. It's gonna be a, it's gonna have a Parkway feel to it because it's gonna be a lot of whip. So, I'll just make a motion that we name the connector road the Booker T. Washington Parkway.
Would second that.
Then motion. Second, any discussion?
I have discussion. I have discussion. And although I think it's a great idea, I would still like it presented to the public as one of the options that they can choose and still get their feedback. Because something else might come out that we haven't thought of or... And that's not shorting your idea. I think it's a very good one.
It's not my idea. It's Melissa's, and I want to give her full credit for that. It's magical. To me, it's magical. It makes all the sense in the world.
It does, yes, I agree. I'm just looking for community input as well.
So, you're just saying we release it to the press and say, we're thinking about naming this road this name? Does anybody else have any comments?
You know, let's just get in the form, getting my damn decision on anything without being politically correct. So, we either drop it right now and send it out to the people later or we vote on the motion.
I kind of like...
Motion's on the table.
Motion's on the table. The discussion is there. And I don't mean by political correct. I mean, we have to pass it by the entire citizenship. I think Booker T. Washington's a wonderful guy. I'm sorry, I didn't think about it. But I just think we have to pass it out and get a voice opinion. We are, we're a voice opinion. That's what they elected us to do. So, I would like to move on and call for the vote. And let's throw the discussion.
Okay.
You heard, call for the vote. Madam Clerk?
Excellent. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Nay, for the reasons I explained.
Councilman Shaw Walter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Says 5-1 on that, on that name. Good. Thank you.
Okay, I'll tell you.
All right. Anything else?
Just pointing out that the Dialogue on Race has been rescheduled for February 13th at 10:00. That's a Saturday.
What? I'm sorry.
The Dialogue on Race Winter Summit is scheduled for February 13th at 10:00 a.m. Also, I had a request from a council member to have a presentation on basically a process for resignings, conditional use permits, proffers, things like that from the attorneys. I'll set that up in the coming meeting if it's agreeable with council with one of the next couple of meetings. Also, I had a request to, for the cost of the investigation from the attorneys into 103 College Street. I can come up with that easy enough based on, I guess, past bills and our current bills, if I get with Reed. I could add to that time from staff if you would like, if that's a desire of council, that I come up with that dollar.
The reason why my husband was asking about that was that because obviously we're not spending our money on the citizens. And the intention here is to make sure that we provide the services to the community that they need, including, like, the bus services.
The vice city's figures.
The estimate time staff would be an estimate, but we can give you a fairly close measure. Okay? That's all I got.
Not only my property, College Street as well. Thank you. I mean, Ronald Street as well.
Take them both. Mr. Brown, you got anything else to add?
No, thank you, man.
Any other staff? Okay, we will begin this section of our organization year 2021 with the election of Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a nomination of Councilman Bishop. Councilman Bishop has, of course, been on council now for five years. He's also retired. And if for some reason you cannot do something, Mr. Bishop would be able to fill in for you. And I myself think he would be an excellent Vice Mayor for 2021. And I'm gonna put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that.
I can second that.
Motion's a second.
I have a question.
I assume you will accept that. If you're right, yes.
Can we go back just a few years? Like, I've only been on for a few years. But who held that position previously in the last several years? I know it was me, then, Mr. Hubbard.
Mr. Hubbard, you've had it. Mr. Stipes had it. Mr. Bishop has had it four years ago? Something like that, four years ago? But Shaw Walter had it right before that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
In the, okay.
I really like Mr. Bishop to have that decision. I think he deserves it.
Madam Clerk, would you, Paul County, take the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Shaw Walter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Says 5-0 and one abstention. Congratulations, Mr. Bishop.
Thank you.
My first honor, will we give you the reading of the section? And we're over here, Bill, I'll give it to him in a second. Council, board of committees by Mayor Barbour.
The only... Oh, it's clear on a regular, set regular meeting dates in the House of Counsel.
Currently, our regular meeting dates are the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month at 7:00.
I'll second that.
I need my motion. I'm just trying to...
Some move.
Motion.
And a second. And a second.
Madam Clerk, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Shaw Walter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Six, seven. This is where we, how you're making the standing internal committees within the town with the exception of Water and Waste, Street Committee, Finance Committee, Emergency Services, Public Health. Central Business, I did have a request from this Hicks that said she would like to go on Central Business. So, I will leave that up to the motion by council as to who's on it. So, we can leave it as it sits with Mr. Bishop and Ms. Sacks.
We don't set those committees, Mayor. You do.
I just did.
Okay. You go.
I'm leaving it up to you to determine if you want to change Central Business. If not, we'll move on as what it is as presented. Do I have a motion?
Now, where is the motion? Where are we voting on?
We're voting on Water and Waste Committee, which is a new name. We've taken silver and everything else off of it, which is Mr. Shaw Walter and Ms. Sacks. Street Committee, which is Mr. Stipes and Mr. Bishop. Finance Committee, which is Mr. Stipes and Mr. Shaw Walter. Emergency Services Committee is Mr. Bishop and Mr. Hubbard. Central Business is Mr. Bishop as the Chair, Ms. Sacks. And Public Health and Welfare and Council on Human Relations are a head hop that's sort of about town, about town, state. Do I have a motion?
We can remember that on...
Is the motion again?
I'll make a motion that we approve the selections for the council appointments for the next year by the mayor.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
So, once again, I'm not putting, being put in a committee? Is that correct?
Madam Clerk, would you call, would you, Paul County?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Nay.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stipes?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is 501. Council appointments to Aquatics Advisory Board and Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I am going to nominate Mr. Sti, uh, Mr. Hubbard to take both of those committees.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second. Have a motion and a second.
So you are now going to give me that, is that correct?
That's correct. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Nay.
Councilman Hubbard?
I guess I could stand.
Good move.
Councilwoman Stipes?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's 501. The next council, this is the council appointment to Planning Commission?
411.
Do I?
It's 411.
Oh, yeah, whatever. Staple the vote for yourself. We could let 411, thank you. Council performance commission, Planning Commission. And I have had several comments from council on the open, wide open. I have some council members that say we would like to not have a member on the Planning Commission. Others say we would like to have a member on the Planning Commission, but it would be a liaison and a non-voting member. And others, you know, so I lay it out. I'll ask you, what do you want to do and who do you want to appoint?
I'll go ahead and I'll start that discussion, and I haven't had any conversations about this with you, Mayor, but the, having served on the Planning Commission for seven years before I ran for council and seeing what's happened since then, we used to have, I think, five members with a, with a council member that sat on the committee. But things have changed since then. We now have nine Planning Commission members. And there have been issues, not just recent issues, but past issues with that liaison. And I would recommend, and I don't know where we go with this, but I would recommend that we allow our Planning Commission to operate independently and autonomous from us and prevent some awkward situations. And, and even when I was on the Planning Commission, having a council member there at the time, it has, you know, I'll just leave it like that. I recommend, or I'm of the opinion that we should just not have a planning, or a council member on the Planning Commission, allow them to operate independently and autonomous of us. But that's just where.
There's nothing in the town charter that says the town council said we have to have a member, correct? Okay.
I'll start the discussion in fact.
Well, first of all, I just hope that you didn't sleep with yourself. Because you told me last year, when I asked for a committee, and you said, no, you have to be in council for at least a year. I've been in council for at least a year. Now you refuse to give me a committee.
That's correct.
Then you took away the Parks and Rec, and then now you are, obviously, you guys are getting rid of the Planning Commission town council person in there. So just, just, I hope that you do understand that this looks really good on you.
Well, I'll tell you, the reason that I have taken you off, elected to take you off the Recreation Commission is that I don't appreciate the way that you have chastised, you have attacked, you have criticized the members of the committees, not only on Facebook, but also in our public meetings. So you've not shown me the ability to interact on councils and commissions. So that's why I did it, and it's done.
That is such a rude comment out of you, considering that you're the one that has been telling even people that I wear for the park, to be quiet and sit down, really. And she was part of the Parks and Rec Commission, not Commission, but the department.
Okay.
Can we get back to the discussion at hand, which is the Planning Commission?
Yes. Is there any discussion, or do you want to, I mean, is that a motion?
I'll make a, I'll just get out there for discussion. I'll make a motion that we no longer have a council representative, whoever that might be, any council member on the Planning Commission.
I'll second that. I believe it's time that they can act independently of council. I agree with that.
Any discussion?
Well, I don't know. If a person acts as a liaison, you think that influences the, that decision? Does it have a council member on it, is what we're, is what's saying?
I would say the biggest thing, Mr. Bishop, in my opinion, is it can prevent, or it can prevent some awkward situations, and I won't go into details on that. We've seen them very recently, we've seen them in the past before, before the current. And also, we have, we have, we have an outstanding non-person committee now. It's big and they're, when I say it's big, it's, I believe that it's time for them to function independent of us and not, not be, to have that liaison, I don't have the right words, but I, those changes. The influence, yeah, it is, because I sat on that for seven years. And sometimes knowing, sometimes knowing there's a council member there can prevent some, some types of discussion, because the, the, the town council member is, is thinking more political, and that's not the purpose of the plan, the land, the Planning Commission is focused on appropriate land use, period. They're not focused on politics. We're the ones that's focused on politics. So having that, the combination of how we've evolved as a Planning Commission to have nine very well-qualified people that, you know, function very well, and having a council member on there, I just think we've outgrown that. That's what I would say.
Thank you.
So that's it.
Well, I guess I have a question with, about that, because if you're saying that the Planning Commission can be, make it, someone in there can make it very political, I don't completely understand the statement when there is other instances here that I see, for example, you know, like central business being kind of on the edge of that, mostly when, you know, the person that ran the central commission, central business committee to, you know, was part of that or whatever, making banners for downtown with her logo on it. I think, I mean, that right there is a political thing.
The Planning Commission, that's what we're talking about? We're not talking about Central Business? Which has nothing to do with the Planning Commission.
And I'm just saying, council in general.
Can you explain to me how a Planning Commission can make it a political position? Because I don't understand it.
I did not say it would make it a political position. I said, these, the evolve, the evolution of our Planning Commission to where it is today, I think that we've outgrown the need for a planning, or a council member liaison of any sort. And having a town council member there can influence some of the discussions. I didn't say it made it political. I never said that, what I said is, that person has a political, and I have a political angle on things, but the land, the Planning Commission is focused on land use, appropriate land use, period. We're focused on taking that land use expertise and recommendation and looking at it through the lens of politics of our community. Is this best, like the action we're going to delay for two weeks? The difficult decisions, because we take their recommendation and then we look at it through our political lens and say, is this, does this make good sense for our community as a whole? So I've said enough, but that's, I think, the changing times and where we are now with our Planning Commission, we've outgrown the need for a council liaison. But that's just my thought.
How does Bloxford do it? I wondered, you know, there's around the areas, do they have a pla, a town council member part of the Planning Commission?
Bloxford has a, a council member that is a voting member. Montgomery County has a liaison that is a non-voting member.
Because that position can be a non-voting position, but it can still be there. I mean, it's, I do personally think, not just because I was part of there, I actually really, really enjoyed it, besides the one, you know, the one person that's no longer with us, I really miss him, but everything else, I think, you know, as far as the Planning Commission, I think is, is really good for the town council member to be there.
And, and that's not preventing any council member from attending. We can attend, in fact, the, the meetings, I've attended several Planning Commission meetings. Preventers, that's not preventing you from, or anyone, any of us, from attending a Planning Commission meeting and commenting. That's always allowed. So it's a public meeting. So I'm not, I'm not proposing that. I'm just saying, I think the time is right to let them operate autonomously and independently of us. And that's just my opinion.
Madam Clerk? Now, this is to, just not to have a voting, not to have a representative at all on the Planning Commission? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Nay.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Stipes?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is 501, would you? Mr. Bishop, time is in closed session.
Yeah, thank you.
Before we do that, do we skip over council reports?
We did.
We did. I'm not sure I stand anymore on council reports, but if that's what you'd like to do, we can do that.
I would.
Aye. Council reports, Mr. Stipes?
No.
I had my say too much earlier.
Mr. Showalter?
No.
Mr. Hubbard?
Yes. One thing I would like to bring out on your desk is a letter that I wrote during Christmas concerning ideas I had that maybe could make council meetings move a little bit better. I think, I think I was disappointed, and I'm sure other people were disappointed, with the meetings we had somewhat last year. So these are just some ideas I have, and I'm not sure if, you know, if other people have ideas on this. And it's what I was thinking, is that maybe everybody could look this over and think themselves, and maybe we could put it on the agenda for next meeting of any changes that we would like to have during our council meeting.
I would like to see it happen the first meeting in February, rather than immediately right on top of us and give us time to think.
That'd be fun.
Can you send, you had mentioned that to me, I never did get that email.
Yeah, because, well, we had a little, we had some logistic problems. But this, this is the letter that I was going to send.
Okay.
All right, another point I had that I'd like to bring out is, I would like, I think a lot of you know that Brian Tickle, who has been the manager of Walmart, and I don't know how long Brian has been the manager, but I'm going to say 20 years, and Brian has moved to a different location, but I would just like to have it down in the notes how the town of Christiansburg appreciates what Brian Tickle and Walmart have done for us and what they've done for the community. And I just, I'm not sure if there's any way we could do this to make sure that he knows that we have expressed our, you know, thankful.
Inform the letter, let the council sign. Incidentally, Mr. Tickle retired after 31 years. He is now managing the Love Store in Christiansburg. So he didn't go, he didn't try to retire.
I could wait a trail to not be there to learn from Brian Tickle. I could do that.
Now, another thing, I'm not sure that if people saw in the paper on Valentine's on Sunday, there was a short letter that I had written, and it was concerning the CARES Act and how the town of Christiansburg have supported different areas, you know, during this time. And because there are some people that have come to me and said, well, the, the town is not doing anything, is all they're thinking about is the park, and they're not doing anything here to, to support people who need support. And if you read that, it shows there, I believe that we have given over a million dollars for, on different concerns, concerning that. I guess that's, you know, another thing I wanted to bring out, I think everybody has to have had the feelings that I've had concerning what happened in Washington, D.C. last week. To me, that's inexcusable. And sometimes I don't think that, I think they're looking for us politicians to say something about how that went. And, you know, we talk about Watergate, we talk about other things, this thing was much more. And sometimes it scares me a little bit that things like this are going to trickle down to towns like here, and we're going to have yelling and shouting matches, and things are going to get out of hand. And I would just want to encourage all of us here at council, you know, to be professional at all the time. And I'm through.
Mr. Bishop?
No, I don't have anything.
Ms. Stipes?
The only thing is the Arts Advisory Board, we've decided to let them work on the tasks at hand and not add anything new at this time. The staff is a little bit overwhelmed, and we don't want to put extra pressure on them. So we're giving it a month before we remute. Thank you.
Ms. Stipes?
I would really like to encourage people to see if they can use the local restaurants and, Bon Shop are your favorite local restaurants, and, you know, encourage people to go out to these restaurants and support them during this time. I think, not just the restaurants, but local businesses. I think, I really like what the City of Rafferty is doing. They're, I forgot what they called it, but it was, they're having like a week.
Restaurant week or something, five, five, something, picture five restaurants, and it's Restaurant Week and encouraging some of these or something.
And I think that's very positive. And I, I would love and encourage the citizens to, to help us do this. I mean, it doesn't have to be ask town council members going out to a restaurant and saying, hey, you know, come out here, or, you know, whatever shop it is that they like to go to, I mean, including, you know, even like printing supplies, like, I'm, I'm, I didn't mean to endorse that, I'm not, but I'm just saying, use your local businesses.
Shop small, shop.
Yeah, shop small, shop local. And I think, you know, I think it can send a big wave out there and a message, because I do think that the local businesses are needed. And, and it just hurts to see, not just local businesses, but it hurts to see, you know, everything that they're going through during this pandemic and, you know, trying to survive and try to make it. And I think a lot of people have lost their jobs. I mean, we had several, many of our tenants actually lost their jobs because they used to work for places like Country Cookie, and they had a job for 20-plus years, and all of a sudden they lost their jobs now because, you know, COVID and everything else. So I do encourage people to, you know, if they're going to support anything, I mean, I'm not trying to, to say don't go to Amazon or any, any of these stores, but if you can, you know, shop local, stay local.
Let's see what we have to eat with our public information people next day or two and see, spitball some ideas with them, see what we can come up with.
That would be great. I think, you know, even getting the Facebook or any, anybody that wants to make a video or pictures, or maybe we can have a anywhere, you know, somebody can say, this is really, really good plate, or this is a really good sandwich, or this is a really good coffee, or, I don't know, something like that.
I think you could script it after, you know, the, the shop local Saturday after Thanksgiving.
And then, and then, you know, quote, always don't put now, let's keep doing it.
And almost a great niche would be show the love to our local businesses for, it would give us enough time for Valentine's Day.
And, you know, I put something out there in, you know, the other day, I really love the Christmas displays that were done downtown. I think the high school students did a fabulous job bringing the Christmas cheer. And I think a lot of people try really hard to do that during the holidays, but I don't think we have to stop there. I think even during the holidays, I, not holidays, but Valentine's or during this time, you know, I think a lot of people are dealing with depression, pain, COVID, not being able to see family members, losing family members. I'm losing my grandfather as I'm speaking right now. And, and I think if we can be able to just even put hearts on the windows, I think that can do something, you know? Put hearts anywhere where you work. I mean, it doesn't take a lot. Tell your kids, go right ahead and do something with crayons and put it on there, then put in a piece of paper and put it in the window. I, I just think spreading more of, you know, we are here for you and we're here together. We, we got to make it together. This, this whole thing with COVID and everything else, and I think everybody's emotions are high. And, you know, maybe I play into this a little bit, you know, I, I, I want to be, I'm not saying that I want to be loved by you guys, but what I'm saying is that I hope this 2021, like Mr. Hubbard was saying, we don't have to agree on everything, but I hope that we can work on everything together.
Thank you. The only thing I have to add to any of this is a very friendly reminder that your, call your forms are due by the first of, I'd like to say before the first of February, it has to be done by the first of February. Does that all you had to turn in to?
Yes.
Okay. So those, they are still, going on front row reports. Okay, now, Vice Mayor.
The request for a closed meeting under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 for the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any other body. The closed meeting is being held for discussion of personnel, especially the appointment of officers for the year 2021. And that's a form of motion.
Thanks again, ma'am.
Motion of a second. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Stipes?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
So, so, thank you. We're going to take a break, three minute break. At that time, I will ask all, everyone except the county attorney to leave the room.